Good evening and welcome to the February 16, 2022 Interviews for Boards and Commissions as part of the Board of Supervisors meetings. Before us, we have Pam Kravitz, who is interviewing for Citizens Traffic. And with that being said, I will let John, if you're ready.
Good evening, and thank you so much for applying to be a part of the Citizens Traffic Commission. A couple of quick questions. What motivated you to volunteer?
I was on the traffic committee at the university, at the College of New Jersey for five or six years, and also their land survey committee.
Okay.
So I've kind of, I like doing it. And since I've been home, I've noticed a lot of traffic dilemmas. And I thought, oh, okay, I'll put my interest to work.
Awesome. So specifically, which traffic dilemmas have you concerned?
Circles, streets where you can't see around bends, 25 miles that people don't go 25 miles, 35 miles that end up being 50 miles. Just neighborhood safety is my concern.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I don't want to ask any more questions.
That. We'll pass it over to Suzanne. She looks like she's ready to ask a question.
Yeah, I have to work on that look then. Thank you. You don't have to try to look at me. I know it's very confusing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you can look at her. Yeah, that's fine.
I can see and hear you just fine.
She can see you.
You know, I echo John's, thank you for putting your name in the hat. I had the privilege of working with the group for a while as their liaison, and they're a great group of people who do a lot of hard work and hard thinking. And, you know, you mentioned some of the work that you did at the College of New Jersey. And I was wondering if you could tell me like an example of a problem or situation there? And the solution that you and your, you know, your teammates came up with to address that solution?
We had a problem with crosswalks. And first, it involved the neighborhood because our students were living in the neighborhoods and having to cross township property. And at first, the township was like, you know, you lose a couple of students. Oh, well. And we went very nicely to them and asked if there was something we could do. And they finally suggested that we actually could put in a crosswalk at our expense. No stop signs, nothing else, but a crosswalk that would signify that this was a purposeful walk. And we also put in the ramp on the sidewalk to say that this was meaningful for students and that they really shouldn't cut in between neighbors' homes to be doing this. So we, we had some problems with students not respecting neighbors. So we sort of worked with the neighbors and the students to work with that. As the college started putting in more restaurants and opening them up to the neighborhood, I think that also increased the goodwill with the neighborhood. So it was more than just our committee. We also dealt with parents who would park anywhere to be able to be close to the dorms to pick up their students. And of course, the police would ticket them. And our campus police were township police. And of course, that did not favor the school or the local police. And they would come to us to fix this ticket. We pay tuition. And we would have to go, well, if you read the parking laws, you know, well, we pay tuition. So I'm very used to, in all of my dealings as a professor, I've been on other boards where I've dealt with parents. I've done a lot of student counseling. I'm very used to dealing with the public and especially parents. And you get used to negotiating and not telling everything. And I don't mean that in an obtuse way.
Sure.
I mean that in a, in a way that you, you calmly bring out facts without making anyone feel bad and still being able to give a ticket.
Excellent. Thank you. I am going to, it is 7:10, so unless Dan or Fred, I will give you guys a bite of that next apple, unless there's a pressing question that you have.
James, I just wanted to tell the good professor, I really liked the name of your published article there. My manager took my lunch money.
He stole my, he stole my thunder. I was saying, John up here.
Was this close to getting a best paper?
Yeah.
Best name, anyway.
Did you have anything else to add, Fred, or do you want to wait until the next applicant?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we appreciate it. Nice meeting you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Gorlick is outside. Could you send him in as well? Thanks. Yeah, you will contact you within a couple of days. Thanks. Good evening.
Hey.
How are you, Mr. Gorlick?
Happy Puppy Day.
Yeah, but you dropped your scarf on the way, and don't forget it. No worries. Yeah, you can sit at this one, I think. That microphone's live. Yeah, there you go. Very official.
Come on, it's an important day at home. You have to celebrate Puppy Day.
He's nine.
So thank you for coming out. I'm going to open up the questions to, I'm going to start with Supervisor Grenier. Dan, if you have any questions for Mr. Gorlick?
Sure. First of all, welcome and thank you. If it's uncomfortable, you can look ahead. I can see you fine. I do appreciate you trying to see me. Really, just the general question we, I think we all like to, like to hear is, what spurred your interest in this, in the group and what, what would you like to get out of it as a volunteer?
I have some experience in this area, and I thought I might be able to just help out based upon where my career took me and some things I had to deal with. And it's always to help out and you're good to help out in your community. And I think that with my experience, it's probably one of the best ways I could help out.
And have you been to any of the, have you watched or participated in any committee meetings?
I have not.
To experience, okay. I know we're a little stressed for time, but I'll pass it along, James, so you can get the next folks' questions in.
Thanks, Dan. I appreciate that. Dr. Weiss, do you have any questions for Mr. Gorlick?
No, but I would like to thank you, Richard, for applying to be on the emergency management team. The group doesn't usually meet. It's a, it's an ad hoc committee run basically chaired by the chief. However, I'm sure the members of the group correspond with him on occasion when things pop up. Do you have a problem with that type of operating system?
I don't at all, but my, from my experience, I would just point out, it'd probably be a good idea for the township to have a lot of blueprints for how to deal with crises and then maybe to drill on them and tabletop exercises and to review them. Because, you know, I'm sure Mr. Ferguson, through his association with the National Association of Township Managers, they, and through also your insurance broker, can tell you the major crises you're likely to face and then to drill on them. And one great example was years ago, the Buffalo Bills drilled on a paralysis situation involving a player at a football game. Nine days later, on opening day, a player ran down the field and was paralyzed. He's walking today because they drilled on that nine days before. So if the township hasn't drilled on active shooter, on an active shooter, or the likely things that could happen, probably should, because otherwise what you're going to do is spend three hours or four hours circling around saying who does what. But if you have that plan in, then it hits. Whether it's an electrical outage that could be from an ice storm like we had about seven years ago, people can spring into action and most importantly, stand their lanes. Because I've seen it where it hasn't happened, and it can be quite stressful, and the passage of time eliminates options. So it's ad hoc is great, but you might want to pay more attention to that, given climate change and things that can happen. And obviously, the proliferation of people with dubs.
Sounds good. Do you have experience in the ICS system?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I will kick it over to Suzanne. Doesn't look like she has anything to add. She's giving you that face of I have nothing to add.
I've known Rich for way too long, so.
Soccer sideline.
Oh, nice. Okay. Supervisor Lewis, any questions? Nothing. He knows him as well. Excellent. Well, thank you so much. That was interesting what you were just saying that last, you know, maybe some preventative stuff as far as, you know, emergencies, if that makes sense. You'll be hearing from us.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Art McNally, I'm going to send you the link. I'm doing that now.
Yeah, I think virtual. I think so, yeah. Yeah, if he's here, we can bring him in early.
We don't have Thomas waiting in any call.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as he comes in, just let us, let us know. We'll bring him in.
Want to take us offline for a sec?
Yes, please. Welcome back to the interview part of the Board of Supervisors meeting. We are now interviewing Thomas Argentiary. Did I say that correct?
Be good. Yep.
Excellent. For the Historical Commission, I will start the questions with you, Suzanne, if you're ready.
So how would if I start this way with a question that's not really an appropriate question? You know, we have two historic groups that work in the township. We have the Historic Commission and the HARP. And we have a lot of openings on the HARP. So what, do you know that we have two? And if you know that we have two, are you truly more interested in the Historic Commission? And if so, please tell us why.
Yeah, I do know. I think I was attracted to the Historic Commission because I know Helen Hines very well. I've known her for years and years and years. And I've come to know Joe as well. So I think the discussions I've had with her and with Joe are in align with my thinking and thoughts on how this should work. So I think we would work well together.
So Mr. Hines is on one and Mrs. Hines is on the other. So, but you're still commission as opposed to HARP?
Yes, Helen is the one I'm more interested in working with.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Dr. Weiss?
I'm going to ask the question that everybody always asks when, when they, when they come forward is, what, what do you have to bring to the table, Tom?
Yeah, so I'll start off by saying I have no direct experience in historical preservation or anything like that. What I bring is a long history of interest in the township. I moved here in 1983. And for those of you who have been around that long know, this township has changed a lot since 1983. When I moved here, good majority of the township was still farmland. I lived near where Lang's farm used to be. All of that land along River Road where Macklesfield is was farmland. All of the property south of Edgewood Road between Woodside and Skylar was farmland. I think that was Charlene Farmer, or maybe not. I don't remember. But the point is, I watched all that disappear. And quite honestly, that's what attracted my wife and I to come and settle in Lower Macfield and raise a family here. And looking back, I don't know if there was anything I could have done or gotten involved with that would have helped preserve that. I do remember in the late 80s, early 90s, the township had proposed a bill to buy the remaining farmland from farmers who wanted to sell it with the stipulation that they would stay on and farm the land. And that got voted down by the, by the citizens. I did vote in favor of that. But regardless, I was very involved at that time anyway, raising three kids and quite heavily involved with Troop 30. That's how I know Steve and Helen Hines on their adult committee, coaching kids' sports. And I was also very involved with the Kids Kingdom Project. And one of the things I like to do is one of the things I like to do is bicycle. And my favorite route is to go past Patterson Farm on Mirror Lake Road. And I've been doing this for 20-plus years. And I've been watching that building fall into more and more disrepair every year. And I remember the Edgewood Village building that collapsed, which is now Di Lorenzo's Pizza, I think. And, you know, I can't stand to watch these properties deteriorate. And if I don't get involved then, and they do collapse or they do fall into a state of disrepair that it can't be dealt with any further, then I've got no one to blame but myself. So that's my interest in joining the Commission. I'm a scientist by training. I have a PhD in biophysics. And I think I bring a keen analytical mind to the committee. And of course, preservation's only half of the story, right? It's nice to preserve these buildings. And then what? Now what do you do with them, right? You're going to keep preserving them year after year after year? There's got to be programs and other purposes for these properties. And I have some ideas about that as well.
Thanks, Tom. I'm finished. Mr. Chair, you can give it off to the next person.
Chair. Supervisor Lewis, no questions? He's good. Thank you so much for throwing your name in the hat. We really do appreciate it. And someone with your credentials, it would be a huge asset to either board. So if you change your mind and you want to do HARB, we would really appreciate that. But if you want to, you know, stay with the Historical Commission, I completely understand. Helen's a terrific asset to the township as well. Steve does offer free sandwiches during the meetings, so.
That's when?
Just to members, just saying. Thank you, Dan. We appreciate it. You'll be hearing from us soon.
Yeah, James?
Oh, Dan, I'm sorry, Dan. Did you have something?
I'm not really going to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So, Tom, I just want to make sure the board knows you come highly recommended by all the current members of the Historic Commission. I'm the current liaison to both, actually both HARB and the Historic Commission. So you'd get stuck with me either way. But he does come very highly recommended. We haven't met before, but like, like James said, you have a very impressive resume. And I appreciate folks with, who can come in with a slightly different way of looking at things and look for solutions just to keep things working and operating versus just preserving. I think that's, you made an excellent point there.
Yeah, and you know, listen, I want to be where I'll be most useful. So Suzanne, you know, if you want to pitch for me to, you know, join the other committee, then I'm willing to listen to what you have to say.
Well, the only thing I'd say, Thomas, I don't even know if we actually have an opening on the Commission. So HARB may be where you belong.
All right, well, let's correspond. I think you have my email. We can talk about it.
And yeah, we do have one opening on the Historic Commission left, I believe. And now I think we'll. Yeah, and we have two on the HARB, however, they are by ordinance and regulation there. They have to have specific backgrounds, which we'll have to, I need to get back to our planning, planning director, because he's the one with all the knowledge about who can do what. But appreciate you coming in tonight.
Okay, anything else, you guys?
No, Thomas, thank you again. Appreciate it. Nice meeting you.
Thanks so much, Tom.
All right, you be well.
Bye.
Thanks.
Bye bye.
And with that, you can take us off the air for two minutes. If you guys want to get a quick break. Good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm your Chair, James McCartney. I'd ask that we do a whole rise for the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Roll Call. Supervisor Lewis, here. Supervisor Weiss?
Here.
Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Supervisor Gernier?
Here.
Okay, and just a reminder, public comment on agenda items will be taken as each item is discussed. Township Manager Ferguson, do you have an update on COVID for us?
No update tonight unless there's any questions.
None heard. We'll move over to Item Number Five, Community Announcement. Mr. Ferguson, I'll let you take care of that as well.
No problem. Reminder, during this section of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement. Or you can call the Township Admin at lmt.org to request a special announcement be added to a future agenda. Pool registration is now open. Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Pool registration is now open. The discount period ends on March 4th, 2022, which is two weeks or so, two weeks from Friday. That's all I have.
Excellent. Moving on to Number Six, Treasures Report. Ms. Blundy?
Yeah, hi. And I'm going to, if it's all right with everyone, just break up the first motion into two parts. So I would ask you to join with me in a motion to consider approval of the December 2021 inter-fund transfers in the amount of $2,778,829.87.
So moved?
Thank you, Dan. And then?
Second. Motion made by Supervisor Gernier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion? Public comment?
Kurt, actually, could you explain to people what we're doing in terms of that inter-fund transfer from December?
Sure. We are just in the midst of preparing to close the books for 2021 this month. So a lot of those transfers, we wrap up into a sort of, just like we have a preliminary December treasures report. We have to wait and see where some of these funds come out because there's a lot of transfers back and forth. And we want to make sure until we have a specific handle on where those numbers are before we present that for the board as we prepare to close out the books in the next 10 days or so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? That's it? Yeah, yeah. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
So make another motion then to consider approval of the January 2022 payroll and inter-fund transfers in the amount of $789,484.23.
So moved?
Second.
Wow, that was fast. Motion made by Supervisor Gernier, seconded by Supervisor Weiss. Any discussion or questions? Any public comment? Called a question, all those in order, say aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Okay, then last but not least, we asked to approve of the warrant list from February in the amount of $2,081,828.73.
So moved?
Wait here a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gernier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion? Any public comment? Called a question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you Supervisor Blundy. Moving along to Agenda Item Number Seven, Engineers Report.
Well, Supervisors, you have within your packet my report. I have no additional updates to that report, so if you have any questions, I'm available. Otherwise, I have no specific agenda items.
Thank you. Do any supervisors have any specific questions for Mr. Parkwell?
James, just one, more of a, I wonder if we have an update. Do we know, have any, I'm just trying to keep an eye out for when they might start breaking ground on the Pricker Preserve with, I know it's mid-February, so I'm sure they have it in the, on their calendar pretty soon.
Oh, there's Kurt waving his hand. Ferguson has that answer. He's waving.
So we met today with the developer, with their attorneys and all of their staff as well as corresponding township staff. Well, there are going to be some things that we need to work on that we can talk about later. Development agreements and a variety of things. I think the target date for groundbreaking would be, would be May. That's their target. That doesn't, that doesn't mean that ends up being it. But that's the target that they've set to try to break ground.
Okay, it's further out than I anticipated. So curious.
Any other questions for Mr. Parkwell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving along, project updates.
Two things real quick. I'll take any questions if I hopefully can answer them. But just an FYI for everyone, there's going to be obviously projects we have underway that we will begin to add to this, so the list will grow, including, you know, the road program, the pool painting program. We have some other things with some problem, with some, some issues regarding stormwater that we've been looking at in the township that will be presentations in a future meeting that may or not become projects. So we'll work on keeping that list expanded as projects, as projects and approvals and bids and what have you get going. So that will be expanded. So I don't know if there's any, and the only thing I will say is a project update, and I have not asked Chair this yet, even though it says this on Item A. The traffic engineer is prepared, if you would like to do this, to have his presentation regarding, there's a signage addition he wants to make to Sandy Run as well as what I probably improperly call a type of anti-skid material that is not cheap, but is something he wants to discuss as you come over the tracks towards Sandy Run as an additional safety measure. He has taken that material spec and that recommendation that he has sent over to Andy and Remington Vernick for their insights on that prior to that presentation. But I think we'd be ready to do that on March 2nd, if we're so inclined to sort of stick with this discussion that the board had and the desire to continue to change and evaluate speed and safety and to make changes if they're needed. And these are a couple of smaller things that the traffic engineer thinks will help to keep people safe and will be the basis of the presentation.
Okay, yeah, I think I speak on the board. Yeah, we'd love to hear that. Anything else? Knows, project updates? Any supervisors have any questions on any of those items listed under Agenda Item Number Eight?
James, just one. Yeah. And Kurt, I don't know if this is better for project updates or managers' reports. So tell me, tell me what you think. Thinking of Sandy Run, do we have to initiate any of the other quiet zone work as a new project soon? Or is that something we were anticipating but don't need to initiate in the near future?
Are you talking about the project we've been waiting on?
Short, I'll call it the short quiet zone for lack of a better description. Yeah.
So I've done my best to initiate that, Dan. So I have reached out again, not just to the inspector, but the inspector's boss to ask what's happening regarding that final, that final letter. We know the inspectors put us on notice. Hopefully, I'll have something to report on that soon. I'll continue to pursue a final answer on that.
Appreciate that.
To me, if that comes up, that yes, it comes out the way that I had presented, that we thought that would obviously be added on there, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Excellent. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Parks and Recreation. We're looking at the approval of Parks and Recreation Risk Management Policy Statement as required as part of CAPRA accreditation requirement. So I would believe that Ms. Tierney would be joining us at this time. Is she here? Is she going to be online?
She's going to be. Can we, is Monica in the waiting room?
I'm here. I was just in her space for a minute, but I'm here.
It's amazing how you just appear. Now it's time. That's great.
Yeah.
All right, so I will let you, I will let you take care of this. Along the, you know, along the presentation, I would ask that, you know, Monica be given an opportunity to finish the presentation before we have any questions. I know that we had about two weeks to do a deep dive into the, into the policy. I know one of the supervisors, you know, just recently sent out a Word document with some questions regarding what the policies were. So we will cross those bridges when we get there, but it's all yours, Monica. Take it away.
Okay. So through the CAPRA process, we've been reviewing our policies, as you know, along the way. There, I brought these as two motions to you because there is one policy that we have before you today, which is the risk management policy that has to be approved separately by the Board of Supervisor. And the difference between that and the other policies are, it's actually our township. And the difference between that and the other policies are, it's actually our township code that the Park and Rec Board review policies and recommend to board supervisors, but it's not a CAPRA requirement, so that's why I separated and delineated the two. With CAPRA, we will be reviewing policies annually, and whenever there are changes, we will bring them through the appropriate process. If no changes, then we will continue on and just mark them as reviewed. So I just wanted to let you know for future process, this is a great part of CAPRA, you're seeing how, you know, we will continually be reviewing and monitoring the way things operate in our, in our department. So with that being said, I'm here today with two motions. The first one with the risk management policy, now I do know we had the risk management operations manual that we, that you approved earlier this year. This is something that has to be identified as separate by CAPRA, as two separate approvals. So this is a policy statement just saying the importance of risk in our department. And, and then the, so that's the first approval. Eventually, all these policies will be built into one document, with the exception of the dog park and the community center policy. So just to let you know, we'll have one big policy document that will be viewable on our website once this is all done. So first motion I'm asking is for the approval of the Parks and Recreation Risk Management Policy Statement as required as part of the CAPRA accreditation requirement.
So moved. No else?
I'm gonna give it to Dan with a second by Supervisor Blundy, any discussion among the supervisors? Yes, Dan?
Yeah, just quick question, my, my only comment in the, in the word documents on this was, I think you just answered it for me because it references the larger policy that we, that we previously approved and obviously there's a connection there, but you just clarified that it has to be approved separately. So that, that was really my only question on that one, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, no problem, Dan.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Call a question, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries five, nothing.
So, thank you. And for this second approval, I'm asking for a series of approval for all of these policies to include field and facility, department operating policy, dog park policy edits, donation and sponsorship policy, community center policy, security and access policy, and storage of equipment policy. Please understand, there are two outlined policies that we are still reviewing as a park board, which would be the special events and the league sanctioning policy, so we still have two outlines that we have to bring to you at a later date, we're just not finished them with the board, so I will ask for your approval of those.
And just real quick, Monica, the, the two that you said that aren't on here are the league and?
Yep, league sanctioning or league or organization sanctioning or, and the special events policy are not included today.
Got it, yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blundy, seconded by Supervisor Weiss. Any discussions or questions? Yes, Dan?
Sure, so Monica, first of all, thank you for putting these together. No small task to put policies together and organize them. I, I, general comment, I, I had made some recommended, I'll call them editorial comments, and that's really all they were on, on each of them. To just, if, if we are putting into a policy book of some type, to just have some, and this is just any policy we would write if we're gonna put them into a book, you know, putting a policy name and number when it was approved, revision date, stuff like that. General applicability statement of the policy. And then across most, actually, I think all of them, except for the last one we just approved, because I don't think we needed that in there. And then something along the lines of, I made up a statement, our solicitor could probably greatly improve upon it. But something along the lines of letting, putting into the policy as a header, almost that whatever the policy is, the policy and the use of all, what did I say, this policy and the use of all township facilities, I'm looking at the fields and facilities, what is it, as an example, is subject to all federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and ordinances, just so that they know that the, the policy doesn't supersede any of that. That's something that we see all the time in these things, so in this, so across the board, there's just some key header items that I think are helpful to just organize policies in the booklet, whatever we end up with. These aren't, by no means are they critical of, of the policy statements whatsoever. But that was, that's a general overall comment, I, a few of the policies, I have specific questions or comments. So I don't know, James, if you want to, if you want to go through each one of them real quick, and there, I may have three or four questions in total. So I don't know how you want to handle, if you want to go policy by policy or all at once?
Um, I'd, I'd rather not do that in the interest of time, I, I think that I was looking at them when you sent them earlier today, and I mean, with, with the, some of the stuff seemed to just be completely crossed out. Like, for example, in the, in the this is the community center rules and policies. It looks like there was a whole section that was, yeah, like reservations, all that was read it out, is that correct?
I don't think so. No, you know what, you know what that was, James, that's, that's actually.
If you make a comment, is that what it automatically does, it strikes out with the?
No, if you, if you move it from, if you reorganize it at all, it crosses it out, and then it, it, it typically puts it in a different color, this time it didn't, usually it puts it in a green in most of these, if it just gets moved, it gets put in green, if it gets deleted, it gets put in red, but in this case, I didn't delete anything.
Got it, okay.
I did have more comments on that one, I guess.
Um, I mean, Monica, how do you, did you have a chance to look at this?
I, I, I tried to breeze through because unfortunately, I really didn't get the deep dive into all the comments, I didn't get it till late today. There were a couple of things I can kind of go over real quick, especially with the community center, it seemed like they were the most concerns. One of them was, why don't, why aren't we doing private events? And, and I would say to that, like the golf course as a revenue generator, we generally don't have space or time or staffing to do private events, separate use, so we try to delineate community user groups like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the seniors, the quilters guild, those type of groups are using the space. We, we generally just don't have big enough gaps of time or full staff, whereas the golf course has the larger staff, they have a full working kitchen with food there on site and alcohol service where we just don't have that, so generally speaking, private events we forward to the golf course. What we'll tell, someone wants to have a bar mitzvah, bat mitzvah, or a birthday party, we'll recommend the golf course as a place to go. So that was one question that I saw, there was a question about the contracts that we do within, there are really a ton of them, I mean, you can see them at any time, I'd be glad, but user contracts that follow these rules and regulations are approved and viewed by our, they're all pretty much the same. Our solicitor has oversight over them, we'd glad to share whatever with the board that you would want to see. And it looks like you suggested no smoking at all on township property. These are the current rules for use, I'd be glad to make adjustment if the board sees fit, but it's really no change to what we're currently doing. And those were my big ones, I don't know if you have any further on that one.
Dan, did you have any questions regarding specific contracts, or did you just want to see what the contracts were?
No, it, it was not any specific contract, it was just, are they avail, are they available for the, for the board to review if necessary, that's all.
Okay, yes, of course.
And that, that was it.
Okay. And then the smoking thing, I think you understand, obviously, we don't have a no smoking policy on township property now as it is, so to.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to making that a policy, that's why I threw it out there.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that, again, it isn't to change wholeheartedly, it's just when we see the, the rules for use. Since we're setting them, this is, you know, we don't look at the rules very often as a board, so if there was an opportunity to, to address those rules, I figured now would, and it wasn't changing many of them, that was, that was one. And then a couple of them are more like just making sure that it's, if there's a reference to, let's say there's a a, a fee list or, or an insurance requirement or something like that, if there's another reference document that they could go to that, that we could reference here in this policy document versus.
Well, the fee, the fee schedule, I, I, you know, it's all in the fee schedule.
Yes, I mean, I, I would just write that in here, that's all. Let's make sure.
Is there a published fee schedule that you have, Monica, I'm assuming you have something?
It's part of the township.
It's part of the township code, right? Okay. Was there anything else on that, Monica, that, that stood out, any of those notations that you saw?
This one policy, those were the, the biggest ones that I identified.
Okay.
There was another comment made in the dog park manual.
Is it the Homestead Wildlife comment?
Yeah, I mean, that's an easy, easy change, I mean, we, Jamie does do a lot at the dog park as the animal control officer. But that, that's a separate thing that she does for us, I'd be glad to change that wording. And I don't know if there's anything else you want to call out, Dan?
None, that was more of a clarification thing, I wasn't sure. I think we called it out as the ACO doing this, but I, I mean, when I was signing things before, I, I think we talked before, when I say before, I mean a couple of years ago at least. I had seen Homestead as, as giving the, the official entity giving the dog park lessons and whatnot, so I was unclear as to whether or not it was the ACO and the ACO's role, or Homestead as a separate business entity, so essentially, how do we pay that? How do we pay for that, do we pay it as part of, as part of the base ACO role, or do we pay it separately as Homestead, or are those two different things, that, that's what I was trying to clarify there.
I believe we pay it separately outside of the ACO role. But I don't know if we pay the ACO as Homestead and Wildlife either.
That we don't, that I know we don't, I've had to sign those checks.
Yeah, so that's how that operates.
And, and just to point a clarification on the storage of equipment, there was a comment regarding hazardous waste, there's already policies in place regarding hazardous waste on township property, correct?
Yes.
That would not be as part of the emergency management plan, I believe that the chief, is that correct, Chief Kalusi, yeah?
So I think that that's covered as well, Dan, in that, on that, uh, storage of equipment.
Yeah, all, all I would recommend doing there is just putting a note saying, please refer to the that, the hazardous waste balls here, whatever we.
Emergency management.
Emergency management, sorry, the emergency policy there, just to make sure it's clear, that's all.
Cool. Any other discussion or questions regarding these?
John?
Yeah, I think in general, the edits proposed are, are good. I, I would think we'd have to take a vote if we wanted to consider changing the smoking or vaping policy. I myself would, would support that. The other element I was going through in the sponsorship levels and stuff, I guess I'm wondering, what are the rules around that? So I'm not allowed to sponsor a team or anything like that, is that the, the deal, the way I would read this?
Well, the, the teams are separate, the township, they do that as a separate fundraiser, so when they do those signs around the field, this is for township. More internal policy for special events and programs.
So.
In the past, there have been elected officials who are currently elected who donate to, to give back to their local leagues, and there are signs there that with the current elected officials, it's not necessarily as part of an election campaign, but more of a give back. But I know there are election campaign rules too that are separate outside, we do have some rules that we follow with regard to that, that we like all signs to be inward facing. But that, that's kind of a little bit separate.
As it relates to sponsorship, have we really thought about productizing opportunities here that, that we perhaps could be getting additional revenue? Do we have, we do have a strategy specific to that, or is it? I know that you do a lot of work when it comes to the special, like for Community Day, for example, and there's a number of sponsorships around that, and that sort of seems to have a preset process. Is there thoughts that there are other revenue opportunities here that, with facilities that we haven't thought about in terms of naming?
It's not that we haven't thought about it. But it is, I, I can say that we haven't really dug into it.
You haven't what?
How's that, we have dug into sponsorship specific to special events to offset costs. And it's not something that we couldn't consider in the future, it's just that we really haven't had the wherewithal to really dig into it.
And it's okay for you to say, hey, that's possible, but it's a lower priority now too, I'm just, I'm more generally curious than anything.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
See? How easy is that?
Did your screen shut off? Are you good? Oh, you're good? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine on that, I mean, if I'm sponsoring anything, I'll just use another brand, you know.
Nice. Any other questions?
You can always donate too, without putting a sign up, you know.
Oh, yeah, you can do that, yeah. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I, I just, I had one, because I get this question a lot, Monica, and we've talked about this, specific to the field policy. This, this one, and, and this, this is sometimes not an easy one to, to address, depending on which field we're talking about, but when can, what's our, what's our, do we have a clear policy on when a resident who's not associated with the league can go play a pickup game with their neighbors on a field? Like, if they live, if they go for a walk down the tow path with their neighbors and they, they want to go play a pickup, I don't know, two-hand touch game or frisbee or something like that, that, because they happen to be close to Mackles Field, and they, they see, you know, all these different fields out there that no one's on, and they go out there and they might, you know, I've had this happen to me going for a run where I've had someone come out and yell at me for, for running across a field because I wasn't part of a league. How, how are we addressing that when we have these huge public parks, but it, there's a sense that the public can't actually use them, that's, I, I know that's sensitive topic, but it's something that I hear a lot about, so I wanted to see how we could address that constructively.
The, the truth is, when the fields are not in use, with the exception of when we are actively resting a field, now, I know that looks intimidating when you see field closed on Mackles Field Park, we have really been working hard with YMS in partnership to try and reseed and regrow those fields, and we really appreciate when people can help us out with that by staying off those fields, but when the, the leagues are not out there practicing and the fields are not permitted, you can have a pickup game on any field. Anytime, the only exception would be the turf.
Right, no, that's, that's theirs, so is there a, and I don't want to take up too much time, is there a resting season where no one's allowed to use it, or is it just any time of year when they're not using it, people could go out?
Well, we're, we're not permitting before March fifteenth. So after March fifteenth, they can use the fields, but we try to allow some growth prior to March fifteenth, and then there are some fields that we rest throughout the season to try and keep the grass nice, it's just very hard because there's so much overuse with our facilities, we just have too many people who want to participate and be active in this township and not enough field space. That's just the long and short of it.
Yeah, it is what it is, I get it. We'll address that, and again, I don't want to go off on a tangent, there's just some, from a policy perspective, that one is always a head scratcher for me.
It, it's harder to manage when we have such overuse. When there's a little bit more availability, we would be able to have a more of a season and maybe even manage the amount of hours of usage and that type of thing, which is something that would be ideal, but we can't do that right now, we just, we just don't have that kind of wherewithal.
Understood.
Just real quick, circling back to something that John and I guess Dan brought up, was the, the smoking policy, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to even talk about something like that as the grand, I, I mean, is it, because this sounds like it's specific to just the community center.
You could make, no, no smoking policy for all township facilities, so it would be, go beyond Park and Rec, I mean, not to say it's not a good idea here, but. You could make it, it was no, no smoking policy for all township facilities, so it would be go beyond Park and Rec. I mean, so it's not a good idea here, but
Yeah.
I mean, township building, community center, well, I guess it's part of this, but any, any township facility.
Maybe that's something that we can talk about, Dan.
Oh, sure. Okay, yeah.
Do you have any people at the, at the community center that smoke, Monica? I guess I should, no judging, but.
Yes, we have, a lot of the seniors do um, smoke outside of the community center.
Okay. All right, well, I think with that being said, we've discussed this, the uh, the next motion, which was the approval of the policies as recommended by Park and Rec Board um, to include fields and facilities, Department of Operating Policy, Dog Park Manual Edits, Donation and Sponsorship, Community Center, Security and Access, Storage of Equipment Policy and Naming Policy. Not included in that is the league sanction and the special events policies, which we're still waiting on. So I'm going to call to question all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment regarding that? Anybody on the line?
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay. I'm good. Okay, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Sure.
Who who is the maker of the motion? I'm sorry, I missed.
I believe it was uh, Supervisor Blondie, and it was seconded by Supervisor Weiss.
Okay. Supervisor Blondie, would you be willing to accept amendment to um, uh, edit the policies to include the, the minor revisions that I made in the word documents?
Um, I haven't had a chance to go through everything that you sent, so um, Monica, I I I thought we just addressed some of them and I'm kind of confused what you're asking, Dan.
So, so I, we went over, I I introduced the edits that were made across the board. And then some of the other items were just questions or comments, not, not policy changes, just uh, questions on specific policies like the smoking policy, for example, or the field policy. The the edits were more about the um, sort of the introductory items that in, that include. It would also include the one statement about the policy not uh, superseding any township, federal state rules, regulations, et cetera. That's the one item that was added. Uh, the other items are more, I'll, I'll call it administrative in nature. I don't know if Monica, if you would agree with that sort of uh, how I define, how I present that, but.
And can I just ask a legal question? Is, can a township do anything that supersedes federal policies like?
We're not the ones that are rapid, well, no, I mean, that's, so I mean, it's probably, it wouldn't be about it, didn't include it necessarily, but I, and I if they're, if they're created per ordinance, the ordinance is probably, I had to look at them too, probably refer to that, but I mean, it's up to the board how you wanted to proceed on this, I mean.
I mean, is there a redundancy in adding those by basically saying that, you know, the township is already acting as a second-class township that adheres to federal regulations?
We're limited by by state law and federal law to how far we could go to encroach upon their jurisdiction, that's for sure. But I mean, it's, you know, it's entirely up to the board how explicit.
I guess the 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 thing that we have to sort through is how many of the edits are we including in an amended motion, if if any? Unfortunately, this wasn't received until five thirty tonight, and it was part of the reason why I was late, not blaming you, Dan, but um, if I would have had these ahead of time, I think it would have been a lot easier for us to review them. Um, and and say, yeah, these are, these are good edits, but to put them at five thirty and say, hey, would you amend the motion based on my edits? And and the, you know, the head of Parks and Recs didn't get an opportunity even kind of digest them. I don't know if that's a I don't know if it's an appropriate uh, point of order.
I, you know, as as the only supervisor to make any recommendations, you know, I tried to do the homework and bring, come prepared to the meeting so we could uh, see if we could make some some slight improvements. Um, if you don't, it's entirely up to the board whether or not you want to uh, to accept those.
And with respect to Supervisor Granger, I believe he didn't really get an editable version until what, a Friday or something like that? Um, so to me, I, it, just a little uh, you know, supervisor courtesy, it's just, hey, minor administrative edits, I for some board members, it seems to be challenged, that we can't seem to work together on improving copy. Um, but I, you know, I would certainly leave that to the discretion of the, the, the original maker of the motion. I I wouldn't want to proceed past that, but my sense is a lot of these were well-intentioned and and right on spot and 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 why not, you know?
Well, can I, can I do this then? Since there are two additional uh, policies that haven't been submitted for approval, which is league sanctioning and special events. Monica, does approval of the Parks and Rec creation policies as recommended by Park and Rec Board, does that hold up any um, any issues with you for the CAPR certification? Because I know you're under a time crunch with that.
Well, CAPR does not necessarily require board approval for these. This is uh, our own code that requires board supervisor approvals. It doesn't necessarily hold up anything. Um, however, um, I, you know, but we can do this however you want. If you, I mean, the biggest documents, I feel Dan had comments on work. Um, Community Center and the Dog Park. If, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, if we just want to pull those two and and approve all the rest of them, so I could start moving forward with the consolidated document, that would be um, helpful if Dan would agree to that.
And Monica, to your point, the only um, outside of like sort of the intro, that what I, what I keep referring to is the administrative intro stuff. The only comment I had on the dog park one, just to clarify, was the question about Homestead versus.
Yeah, and that's a change that I would make. So if we to include that, um, I think administratively, when it comes down to it, it's not the meat and potatoes of how we lay it out in the the bigger document shouldn't really matter, as long as I you know, we're, right now, I'm asking for approval of the policy itself. Not necessarily all the commas and periods. If you see one in there, we can make an amendment, there are changes at any time, you know what I'm saying?
No, I hear you. I hear you.
Sure, so it's almost uh, you're approving these policies, however, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a moving document that's kind of, it lives and breeds as needed. Um, I I I will go back to Supervisor Blondie, if you're in agreement of you know, understanding that as far as, I guess, your motion, that you understand that it's a living, breathing document that that I guess could be amended along the way, based on recommendations of the board.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, and the second, second, Dr. Weiss, you agree with that as well?
I do.
Excellent. Dan, you're okay with that?
Yeah, so, and and just to back up what Monica said again, it was the, the one that actually had true blue edits and maybe some policy questions was the community center one. Every, everything else was, like I said, was is more administrative in nature, just to just for consistency across policy documents, so.
Okay, and and now we do have actual uh, public comment. If you want to step up to the microphone and uh, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Stephen Heinz, thirteen fifty-five Edgewood Road. And your comment about it being a living document um, stirred concerns that I had as a long-time soccer coach and scout leader in terms of using the facilities and having rules um, generated and then all of a sudden presented, and all of a sudden you have uh, something that was going on for a long period of time that has changed. I, I guess the real question is, has there been any called stakeholder meeting? Um, where you would get together the users and not just representatives as on the Park and Rec Board, which has a fair amount of representation, but you know, having a public meeting, maybe even at the park, and not necessarily to forestall getting this accomplished for use uh, going into the season, but you know, maybe later on uh, at the park, at the facility, having um, an announcement, then asking people coming to represent various organizations and having input from them um, to evaluate the rules that have already been established and maybe suggest more.
So you're speaking specifically of the, of of users, league, leagues? Yeah, so, so I don't know if you caught it. So uh, one of the things that we aren't deciding on tonight is league sanctioning, and I I think that would fall underneath that umbrella, correct?
Yeah, for exactly that reason.
Yeah, so we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten to that point yet? Yeah.
And and all of these imposed rules, stakeholder meeting might be worthwhile as
Sure.
Past experience in, in my profession.
Excellent. All right, thanks for the comment. Yep. Any other comments? Anybody online?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, so I think we still have a motion on the floor, so I'll call to question all those in favor. Raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, all ayes. Motion carries five, nothing.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Monica. We will.
Thanks. Moving on to agenda item number ten, the manager's report.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all right, I'm good. Um, the first item I have for consideration is Resolution twenty-two dash four. Um, if you'll recall, two weeks ago, the board provided authorization to receive quotes for our road loan program. That road loan is um, one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of this year's road program. We received five quotes uh, from lenders with the lowest rate being TD Bank at one point five two percent. Which I was uh, pleased with, as I had mentioned in uh, my manager's report. The budgeted rate that we had included was for three point five percent. That three point five percent number would uh, create an interest over the thirty-sixth month period of repayment of ninety thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. TD quote along with the related legal fees that we'd be responsible for total for the three-year period, forty-three thousand and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. So that is uh, about forty-seven thousand dollars less than what would have been budgeted. So I'm asking uh, for consideration for that resolution um, to um, select TD Bank at the rate of um, one point five two percent via Resolution twenty-two dash four.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Weiss. Um, before I open up the discussion with the other supervisors, one point two five is
Five two.
Five two is ridiculous. That's amazing. Um, because we budgeted for three and a half, and now we're at one and a half? Does that change anything in that, in that debt service or anything?
No, it doesn't. I mean, in the end, that's factored over three years, right? You have a certain anticipated tax collection. Um, we have certain other payments that are in there. At least in the short term, we're talking, you know, you're talking fifteen thousand dollars a year versus potentially thirty that would have been budgeted for this year. So long-term, that might be something that we look at. Frankly, if you do another road loan and you have a little bit of fund balance in there, it gives you some cushion if the next time the rate isn't um, so desirable that way, yeah.
No, that's, it's an insanely low rate. Um, thanks for doing the due diligence on that. Is there any other comments from the supervisors on this? John?
Yeah, I, my main concern with this is that, um, you know, we're going to have a large sum of money coming in, and that's going to be earning significantly less than one point five percent. Um, but I think we're talking about something relatively de minimis here, but it's um, we need to find a strategy to think about how we can maximize the, the return on these sewer proceeds. Because as I understand the second-class township code, it's, there's not really right, and none of those would yield over
Not, 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 not a high percentage rate.
Right, so in general, in the future, I would argue that we need to really think about, you know, borrowing against ourselves for the short-term things and paying ourselves back at a higher interest rate, but um, so that's my general concern, given that the sewer uh, transaction's not complete. Um, I'm going to uh, approve this one this time, but in my general sense, and and this is a, a, a challenge we have, is we're going to have a lot of cash, but we're not going to have a suitable investment for it. Uh, which is why I suggest things like making sure we're over a hundred percent on uh, uh, pension funds or anything that we can do to earn a higher rate of return. So those are my thoughts on this particular issue and uh, leave you to the rest of the board.
Excellent. Hey, Dave, real quick, following up on that, is there a limit that we can um, like, is it based on prime? That we can borrow against ourselves or?
You can borrow against yourself anytime you want.
At any rate, or is there a limit on rate?
You could, I mean, no, I mean, you could sit and, you know, I mean, you have that all the time where you know, there was a number of years ago when we couldn't make payroll on January, in in early January, and we borrowed from the bond fund to make payroll for several months, and then we just returned the money without any interest in it. So it's essentially the equivalent of doing a tax anticipation note to yourself.
Got it.
Um, if you wanted to establish a policy that you were going to do that with the intent to repay, um, you know, the only question that I would have is um, the ability to repay, in my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, you could not do that out of the debt services fund. You could not lend yourself money and use the millage from the debt services fund and pay yourself back. If you lent yourself money from the sewer proceeds, let's just say the equivalent, whatever that was, and it was a half a million dollar or so payment, that half a million dollar payment then would have to come from the taxpayers in general and the general fund to repay wherever you drew that money from. It could not be part of a debt services millage, because that is aligned to an official debt, not your self-imposed debt. Makes sense? So.
Yeah, that totally, so it has to be a, a disinterested third party that you're, that you're borrowing from.
Another fund.
Yeah.
Right, so if it were a Park and Rec improvement, then if there was a Park and Rec fee, that fee could pay toward the, that millage could pay toward the
I see.
Or the general fund could do that.
Okay.
So it, to me, in my mind, it's a, probably a more efficient use of the funds. Uh, but since that's not a completed transaction, it's time.
Fair enough. Any other comments? Any other supervisors?
Yes, uh, James. Um, yeah, the, one of the things that we have to realize that this loan is being paid from as, as Curtis said, from debt millage. We're already getting this income stream. Um, so there is no investment. This is money that the town is already collecting from the residents. Uh, it's specifically uh, designed for debt. And, you know, this, you know, it's, it's been budgeted, we talked about this in the past. The um, the rates of of asphalt, cost of labor, the inflation rate today, you know, we're talking maybe five to ten percent in the next couple of years. This is a, a cheap way to pave more roads without any pain to the township. And uh, I, I firmly support this measure. Um, you know, three years from now, we might want to use debt mills for something else. I get, we might have identified a piece of open space that we can buy, but that's, you know, for now, we've already put it in the budget. Um, the, the interest rate is ridiculously low. Um, we can handle this, and I don't even think this is controversial.
Excellent. Thank you for your uh, feedback on it. Dan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, to Fred's point, actually, it's um, you know, this is debt service millage that we've already applied over the years, really, right? So it's, it's already in the budget. Um, it comes down to, you know, how do you feel about applying the debt service to roads versus some other priority that you may have? Like, you know, the, some of the feedback I'm getting, not that I disagree with how we're applying it, but some folks are concerned that this, in their minds, should be applied to open space because of where it initiated, originated, right? With the bond that was voted on. Now, that bond does cover different things.
Dan, I, I understand what you're saying, but this is not bond money.
I, I understand.
Payment money, this is money that we paid back the bond with. The, that bond is paid, we have a certain income stream from debt millage, has nothing to do with open space. And and I agree with you that if there was a, a piece of open land that the township was able to buy, that we could have identified last year, so that we could have placed this money on open space, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, Fred, either. What, what, what I'm saying is that there's a little bit of frustration of on, for some folks, myself included to some extent. Like, I'm, I'm all for paving roads. You should see one of the roads in my neighborhood, it looks terrible. Um, but my concern is that we don't lose, as a board, myself included, I'm not pointing at anyone, is that we don't lose sight of, of things like open space or or other items that where we could apply this, and we, we make sure, you know, this year, we're doing a lot of roads. That could be a great thing, right? I just want to make sure, moving forward, whether it's open space or, let's say, Kurt, you had mentioned, I think, Stormwater whether it's open space or, let's say, Kurt, you had mentioned, I think, stormwater projects before might be coming up. Other things that we could keep sort of in this wheelhouse, right, of that millage payment to pay back that, pay back that debt that we're, we just keep an open mind moving forward for other things so that we can consider potentially other priorities that come up. That's all. I'm not disagreeing with the approach. I actually agree with pretty much what you said, Fred. It's just
I'm sorry. I just want to point out, because I've actually gotten a lot of calls on this, Dan, and it's relevant. So the debt payment, and you can't hold me to this specifically, for this year, for that general fund debt is about $850,000. What offered this opportunity was the fact that that payment was cut in about half in one year. It went from like 1.7 to 850. In the next couple of years, that debt payment, because it'll start to trend, it's on the downward trajectory, will go down another couple hundred thousand dollars. So like, when we're talking about open space or other priorities, there would be millage at some point in the next few years, let's say, like another four tenths of a mil, a half a mil, that would not be needed for that debt payment. Then if the township had a piece of property it had in mind for open space, the road loan is coming off, that that opportunity is not just there for the road loan, but as that debt diminishes and is no longer needed for the bond payment, the board can contemplate whatever it chooses, obviously, whether it be other infrastructure improvements on the loan or open space or what have you. So that will continue to unveil itself as that bond gets closer to retirement.
Can I ask clarifying quick, Kurt, on that? I'm glad you made that point. As we, I'm using the word transition for lack of a better term, but as that becomes available, what, you know, when we're looking at some couple hundred thousand to $800,000 payment per year on the debt service, what does that translate to in terms of an overall debt we could take out to buy a piece of open space over some amount of time?
Well, I mean
Or anything else for that matter?
Well, I mean, again, what I had mentioned is the equivalent to, let's say, a quarter million dollars a year, right? So if that's a half a miller, so it just is going to be, if you're doing a short-term debt and you can do a short-term debt in the way like we're doing the road loan of maybe five years, up to five years, you would generally multiply that revenue from that mil about times five. But the thing about it is, is right, if the time came and you were going to buy a piece, we could evaluate not just where the millage is going down that particular year, but if in two or three years it's trending down and there'll be more money, you could pay more for that understanding in the end that there's going to be more revenue because the millage won't be needed to do even more than that. The only thing, and again, I'll say, is that for people who've called and asked this question, that debt service millage, we can't sit and collect that debt service millage if it's not going for a debt, right? And sit and sort of collect that money, a million or $2 million, and then go buy something with it. We have to use it for debt. So in the end, we would need to be very anticipatory about something we want to purchase when that debt will go down and how that could factor in. If the debt service millage would be enough, if we needed to take some money from the general fund, if we wanted to go for a grant to supplement that to, we'd have to be really on our game to anticipate what we wanted and what the timing of that is to figure out how much money we would need and how the debt service millage could at least play a part in that.
Any other comments by supervisors? Is there any public comment regarding this topic? Anybody on the line?
There is no public comment at this time.
A call to question of the motion made by Supervisor Blondie, I believe. Was it you? I can't remember. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Motion carries five, nothing.
Before I talk about B to the chair, I'd like to just give me one second to provide an update on something else. So as you all are aware, we, through the American Rescue Plan, were awarded about $3.4 million, of which we've gotten half that money now. We'll get the second half in July of this year. And as I had discussed ad nauseam before, there was a lot of holdups on that money because they were unsure of how bidding requirements would be, how it would be regulated, what were eligible expenses. So in this budget this year, we budgeted to bring half of that money, 1.7 million, over through this revenue shortfall calculator that was allowed by the Treasury. And it left that other 1.7 million that we've talked a lot about stormwater. That was one of the things that was a given. I think the federal government started to realize that auditing tens of thousands of local governments and all their money was improbable. So what they have done is they have created a, what they call a $10 million exemption, which will still have reporting requirements. But essentially says, you can use that money, and I want to be careful how I say this, for just about anything you want. You couldn't use it for pensions, you couldn't use it for a tax cut, you couldn't use it, however, for the things that you'd think of that you would use, infrastructure, open space, park and rec, a typical municipal function, you can use that money at, you know, at whatever priorities that the board would have. So that you'd have to follow whatever bidding requirements you have, like any other pot of money. So the 1.7 million has come back into the general fund this year. We know we're buying police cars and police motorcycles and we're doing a covert that we're doing on South Drive. We have that other 1.7 million. We have some things we've looked at as a staff regarding some flooding issues in the township. That's going to be the, that's going to be the feature of a future presentation by Remington Vernick. But you have a million plus dollars to sit and contemplate that you are going to be required to spend and have to spend it. It's just a question of what the board priority would do. And the good news is, and I'm sort of bringing this up, picking up on Dan's discussion about open spaces, that was a discussion that you wanted to have about a particular piece of property, something you have at least that money there, whether that be matching money for open space for something you're looking at or some other priority that now will be, that's now sort of in your purview with all of those strings off that we were originally limited because of.
And what's the expiration or timeline on that?
2026.
2026. And it can't be used for any grant matches, right?
That's a great ques, I knew you were going to ask. That's a great question. I would probably tell you that you could try, but my guess is if you, you'd have to say where that's sourced from, that that probably would not be viewed. But you could try. You could try. I mean, using match from one grant's source, which is essentially what this revenue source to another grant source, probably.
Got it, probably. Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much for that. You're now up to 10B.
Yeah, so next item. So I did speak about this with the board previously, and I'll bring it up tonight. So over the last two years, we had several events that came together all at once. As you all know, we pay various entities, and there are several of them, money out of our sewage budget for treatment of our sewage. And that includes MMA, Bucks County Water and Sewer, and the Falls Authority, or TOFA. We started submitting the readings from the multiple meters that we had directly to TOFA in early, by the first quarter of 2020. And with that, we saw, I think, that the precision that that brought, staff realized in the end that the size of the bills would come down because it was precise. When that was communicated internally and we worked here and we were preparing for that, excuse me, that was at about the time COVID hit. So what ended up happening was TOFA ended up billing us for only one of the meters and not the second meter. We had been budgeting for about $600,000 a year in payments, understanding when we had averaged that out. Unfortunately, over those two years, the billings was about a fraction of that, about $125,000 to $130,000 a year. We, this was, we discovered this last month or so. So we had eight quarters that we had underpaid dramatically over that period of time. But again, I want to stress, we had budgeted for those payments. And if I say, well, how didn't we see that in the end? Because a lot of these accounts are reconciled from year to year where you're paying the third and fourth quarter and the first and second quarter of the following year. It just was not caught. So with that, we've worked with TOFA, we've gone over all the meter readings with the Public Works Director and have come up the shortfall that was not billed that I'm asking for consideration for all of 2020 and all of 2021 for $1,161,188.37.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Weiss. Any discussion besides the obvious, you know, it is what it is, right?
Well, I mean, I'll keep saying this, the good news is, is it's not as if we hadn't anticipated that size of the bill. If we would have said, wow, we'd only budgeted for 125 and it came in, but we had anticipated this being the charge. And because it's an enterprise fund where things are being carried back, it just, it would have been, you know, prior to the sale, it was a good thing we caught it to have that reconciled, but this squares us up and the money is there to pay.
Well, kudos for being prepared, right, for something like that. Any discussion by any of the other supervisors? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? Anybody on the line?
Comment at this time.
Oh, thank you. Call to question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, nothing. Last but not least, 10C.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So as you all recall, and if you don't have the pleasure of sitting here, you'll see we have a series of laptops that are substituting for cameras that have become antiquated and aged. Last year, the board approved an expenditure that in part went to upgrade and deal with the quality of what we're doing with Zoom, but also offset some of the expenses that we would have anticipated spending to upgrade all of our equipment. As you'll recall, part of that discussion was that we approved the Comcast agreement, which would have represented 50% of the costs of the capital improvements, which we had estimated in total at about $57,000. Comcast money will be probably in in the next month or so. The Verizon deal that, you know, we can give an update on soon has languished for a variety of reasons that have more to do with Comcast. However, we did budget this year and have in the budget the money to receive from both of those franchise renewals at about $57,000. So before you, you have a quote that would upgrade cameras and what I, Dave keeps pressing into my head, that's called a switcher, that will help us and to upgrade the cameras. For those who have watched at home or called and said, why do the school district meetings look clear and yours don't? It's HD, right? We got these cameras back before that was a thing, I think, at least a thing in terms of cameras for local television. So this would include those upgrades, which will improve the quality dramatically. Most importantly, I'm told, even with all the problems with deliveries, with equipment, what have you, we would anticipate hopefully having all of this in during the month of March that we would be transitioned over to much higher quality. The proposal itself that you have from Laro for $26,561.81 is a CoStar qualified bid. That means it's already been done by the Commonwealth. We are just piggybacking on that. And I'm asking for that consideration tonight so we can upgrade everything here in the next month or so.
I move that the township purchased cameras and a switcher for televised meetings in the township at a cost of $26,000,
Second.
Do I hear it? Second. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Gurnear. Any discussion among supervisors? Any public comment? Hearing none. Call to question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Motion carries five, nothing. Thanks, Kurt. Mr. Truelove, you're up.
Thank you. Briefly, an executive session started tonight at 6:15, concluded at about 7:00 when the interviews for different committee members occurred. All board members were present, along with some outside counsel, Mr. Ferguson, myself. Several litigation matters were discussed that involved code, and ordinance matters, trial matters, and appellate matters. And also some personnel matters were discussed at the executive session, which again concluded at about 7:00 PM. Under my solicitor's report specifically, there's one item, and it piggybacks on what Mr. Ferguson talked about in his report for the resolution about the road loan financing. Part of the requirement under the Local Government Unit of Debt Act is that an ordinance be required to pass to authorize the incurrence of the debt and the ordinance that we have presented for advertisement tonight does include information for the lender and the rate and that type of information, which is important for moving forward. And then assuming it's advertised tonight and then approved at the March 16th meeting, then of course, we present that to DCD for their review and approval. Let's say what I'm sure give, but at least this is a necessary part of the process going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board advertise and ordinance authorizing road repair program, loan and financing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Gurnear. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. Call to question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Next, under zoning hearing board, there are three matters. Items A and C are very similar to one another. We will have the recommendation the same for both, but I'll read this specifically. Appeal 22-1950, David and Jamie Lyons, appeal for the property located at 365 Ramsey Road. Tax parcel 20-039-303, requesting a variance from the township's zoning orders 200-23 capital B to increase the impervious surface from the existing 18.6% to 21.1%, where 18% is allowable amount in order to install an in-ground vinyl pool and concrete decking. And they do have some stormwater mitigation measures also that are included, which I think all these actually do when they have full applications anymore. Our recommendations defer to the zoning hearing board. Unless there's a contrary sentiment and there's a motion, otherwise I'll move on. Under B, appeal 22-1951, John and Lisa Burnett for the property located at 61 Black Rock Road, tax parcel 20-047-051. They request a variance from the township's zoning orders 200-14 point capital B in order to construct an addition shed, which will increase the impervious surface from the existing 21.2% to 21.8% where 13% is allowable amount and a variance from the township's zoning orders 200-13 in order to decrease the rear yard setback to 54 feet where 125 feet is otherwise required. It would note that currently the setback that they have is 60 feet. I think a lot of the work was done years and years ago in that area. This property is not in the flood zone, is 15 feet from the flood zone. Our initial recommendation was to defer to the zoning hearing board, but if the board has other sentiments, we certainly would be guided by their decision.
So I think, I believe that this is the one that a couple supervisors had questions on. I know Dan specifically.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer whatever I can.
Yeah, sure.
If you
Yeah, Jim, if you're on.
I think Dave just answered a big question for me in his intro that I didn't hear before.
Was it a Jim question or?
It could be either one. I think Dave just mentioned it, though. But always happy to see you, Mr. Majewski. That, when I saw this, obviously, proximity to floodplain is always a concern in that area of the township, but you reviewed the, not only the FEMA maps, but also the reports that go into the floodway studies, which clarified things. So that was very helpful, Jim. So that settled that issue. The other one, when you sort of combine issues a little bit like that, we see that what on paper looks like a drastic reduction in setback from a required of like over 120 down to 50-ish. But what I hadn't heard before is what, is what, Dave, you just mentioned, I think you said they're currently at 60 feet and would be moving, it would be more of a six-foot versus 70-foot shift-ish?
Yeah, my email to the board last Wednesday, that was in my comment, when he looked at the application that does indicate this proposed addition would only decrease the current setback six feet from the current 60 to 54. So it's already less than what's required by, and this would be a, I guess, a 10% reduction from that. So
Yeah.
From what currently exists. So.
Yeah, and they're already fairly high over what's required from impervious surface area, but they're not increasing much over that, it looks like. And they're already pretty distant. I don't know how else to say it, but past, you know, they're not satisfying. So I'm sort of, sort of on the fence on this one. I'm not opposing by any means, but just participating to see if they have an effect. if, if um, they have an effect on, on neighbors that we would be concerned about as a board, because it does, with those setbacks and the, the, the doubling up, let's, let's say on the two issues is cause for concern. I'm just, how old is that? How long is the, the facility or the house been there?
Those houses date back, I believe, to the 1950s, I would say, just about. Uh, they were, they're post-war, uh, but I would say probably mid to late 50s for their construction.
So it's only occur after the fact is what we're getting at, or?
Correct.
I, yeah, I, it.
Okay.
I, I, they may have been, that may have been constructed before the zoning ordinance, which exists now, imposed setbacks. It probably, it probably did. I'm, I'm guessing, I don't know that as a fact. Jim, you may know that better than I do, but it was a zoning ordinance in effect when they were built, but not the same one that's in effect now. But Jim, if you have any comments on that, um, feel free to weigh in.
Yeah, that is correct. The zoning at that time had setbacks, I think, uh, probably a 50-foot rear yard setback. And um, you know, when they increased it to the uh, resource protection, RRP zoning, they made it 125 feet, and that's for future development, although these people are sort of trapped in that uh, zone where they need a variance.
And there's not a lot, in fact, there's, to my knowledge, there's very few, if any, vacant lots where there could be any new development down there anyway at this point, uh, so.
There are some still available.
Okay. Kurt, I don't know how the rest of the board.
I'm sorry, it was built in 1946.
No, 46 is that old, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just, just.
But based on all that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but you know, it's, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to defer to the zoning hearing board just because the house has been there for so long and it's a relatively, relatively minor changes to the existing condition.
I concur. Does anybody have a, a different opinion of that? Hearing none, you're good.
Okay, thank you. The last one is similar, as I said earlier, to the first uh, appeal listed tonight. This is appeal 22-1952, Patrick and Victoria Cobal, for their property located at 1301 Yale Drive, tax parcel 20-022-045. They request a variance from township zoning orders 200-23 capital B to increase the impervious surface from existing 23.5% to 24.3%, where 18% is the allowable amount in order to install an in-ground vinyl pool and concrete decking. Again, they do propose stormwater mitigation measures and it's very similar to the first application tonight. So unless there's some contrary sentiment, we recommend defer all. Hearing none. Nothing else, I will then conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. True Love. Moving on to agenda item number 13. I'm gonna just uh, slip, flop A and B, if, if anybody, everybody's okay with that, um, just so we can get B out of the way. I think A is probably gonna run into A, 13A and 14, so um, we're looking at uh, zoning inspections and planning, so 13B.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we consider payment request number two for Armor and Sons Electric in the amount of $10,080 for Route 332 Mirror Lake Signal Interconnection Project.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blundy. Any discussion? Any public comment?
James, sorry, James. Get my hand up. Real quick, I don't, is this, I don't know who does the inspection on this one, uh, whether it's Jim or Andy or someone else, but um, are we, I, I just always ask the same question. Are we satisfied with the work done? And if so, is there any money left out there uh, that we would, that would need to pay and what does that cover?
Uh, the only outstanding item on the project is to have the inspection from PennDOT uh, so that they could sign off that everything is in accordance with the plan. Uh, there is retainage in the amount of $3,892.50 remaining for that item, which is sufficient.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Dan. Any other public comment?
No.
Hearing none. Call to question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, moving on to the agenda item 13A, consideration to approve ordinance to amend provisions of SALDO, Chapter 178, Article 11, landscape and open land requirements.
I'll just start out briefly this, um, I'm sorry, you wanna go ahead and make the motion?
Motion made by Supervisor Blundy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Weiss. Discussing, Dave, I'll.
I'm just gonna start briefly, uh, Mr. Meduski's gonna, I'm gonna hand it off to him in just a second. This, the, he'll describe the ordinance, but it was properly advertised uh, for presentation at tonight's meeting, so.
Excellent. Um, Jim, do you wanna uh, go over the ordinance before we start uh, discussions?
I'm sure you may recall at a prior meeting, Board of Supervisors authorized advertising the ordinance to amend certain provisions of the landscape and tree replacement, sorry, tree ordinance provisions. And um, since that time, as Mr. True Love had stated, the uh, ordinance has been advertised. Uh, it was actually posted online on January 31st. It went to the Bucks County Planning Commission for their review. They issued a review letter dated February 2nd, 2022. Uh, I believe you have that in your packet. The first five pages of the letter go through just a rundown of all the changes in the ordinance. You may recall that uh, we did have the requirement that we put in the revised text about um, all required plants should be native plants with the exception that not more than 10% of required ornamental flowering trees and shrubs may be non-native species, to not include invasive, exotic or alien species or any species that are on the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources or Pennsylvania Natural Heritage Program list, subject to the approval of an arborist for the township. The Bucks County Planning Commission, uh, they had just three comments on the proposal. The one comment they had on this one was that they recommend that the arborists used by the township to approve non-native plantings be an arborist certified by the International Society of Arborette Culture, the ISA. Um, the remainder of the ordinance um, was the ones we discussed. Basically, uh, added a number of deciduous trees that we got from other lo, local uh, areas that had um, a more thorough list of native trees. We added in um, a bunch of deciduous trees, several flowering trees, evergreen shrubs, deciduous shrubs, flowering shrubs, uh, some ground covers, perennials. And uh, the, were, there were a common or two from the uh, Bucks County Planning Commission. One was that they just wanted to make an advisement that there are some blights going around and infectious diseases for oak trees in southeastern Pennsylvania. And that while some species of oats are more susceptible than others, municipal officials should monitor planting plans to ensure that oaks are not overplanted to avoid the risk of infection and eventual loss of these trees. So they didn't say that we shouldn't use some of the oak trees that uh, are starting to get this bacterial leaf scorch, but that we should just make sure that we don't overly rely on them in any planting. Uh, they did recommend that the flowering dogwood, the cornus florida, which is susceptible to dogwood and anthracnose, uh, be removed from Exhibit 1. Uh, that is a native tree that uh, has fared well in the past, however, is now uh, subject to that blight that's out there. So those are the comments they had. The remainder of our ordinance, as you recall from the last meeting, for street trees, we changed the minimum caliper from three inches to two to two and a half when planted in the corresponding height and root ball diameter under buckery yards. We also uh, reduced the height of evergreen trees from a minimum of six feet to a height of five feet, with shade trees also being reduced from a minimum caliper of three inches to two to two and a half inch ornamental flowering trees. We had as a height of six feet minimum, where previously was eight, with a minimum caliper of one and a half to two inches, where previously was two and a half inches. And uh, we also have those same requirements under the other types of buffers. We did change the Type 3 Buffer 2 in the proposed ordinance. Uh, previously, the farmland buffer required plantings on the farmland property. Uh, as you may recall, uh, this has been problematic for farmland preservations as the trees die and need maintenance, it starts to get costly for them to uh, perform that maintenance on the trees. So going forward for farmland preservation buffer, uh, we're maintaining the 25-foot buffer that currently exists, but uh, we're adding the 10-foot planted buffer on the residential side of the property line so that the farmland isn't encumbered with the maintenance cost for trees. We also uh, made a slight modification to uh, some evergreen shrub heights from four feet to three feet. And uh, I believe that about sums it up for the Bucks County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jim. Um.
Thing, our planning commission also reviewed the ordinance. And at their February 7th meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment to SALDO regarding the required planting of trees, subject to the elimination of the planting of non-native species. Uh, as Dan had mentioned at the last meeting, uh, you know, he was opposed to that and the planning commission also, their recommendation was to eliminate just that non-native species section of the.
So just for clarification, Bucks County Planning Commission did not mention it, but the Lower Makefield Township Planning Commen, Commission wanted it omitted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, with that being said, I wanna turn it over to Supervisor Blundy, who I believe made the motion. Um, I, I think that there's some clarification that, that needs to be made regarding um, what the origin of this ordinance change is, what the um, I guess the foresight and the planning of, of what it actually means. So I will give you the floor, Supervisor Blundy.
Yes. Sit down, everyone. We're gonna be here for a while. Just kidding. You know, I, I don't know where to begin, but I'll, I'll start with what was the beginning for me. Um, prior to becoming a supervisor, I had reached out to other sitting supervisors to understand like, you know, and please forgive me, I, I do use some grand terms when I speak, right? Like, but where was our central park? Why didn't we have a place in the township that um, had that type of show-stopping foliage, you know, for prom pictures or wedding pictures? And that began my understanding of our township and um, plants. Once on the board, I was fortunate enough to work with the EAC and I've learned a great deal from them. And I am proud of all the work that, that we have done, they have done in beefing up our tree planting, right, using the money that's been there to um, that's been collected to that we don't just have a tree bank, but that we have trees that actually are, you know, in our ground, providing oxygen, et cetera, because of that tree bank money. But I still, you know, you've all heard me, I think some of you even teased me, because when we talk about things, right? I, I said, Andy, can you make the reflectors come, right, instead of this, you know, the, the appropriate terms? And when we talk about different uh, things, I'm always like, can we make it pretty, right? That's my shorthand for what can we do to make sure that our township, you know, looks good, right? You know, if, if we're gonna have this kind of thing, what can we do to make sure that um, we're, we're leveraging all of the science and all of our, our knowledge? So um, fast forward, we do have a big development coming in and I'm concerned about it, right? If you go back and listen to anything that I've said about the development, right, I've been challenging them. You know, let's make sure when people drive by, it looks good, right? That there's, can we put in walking paths and can we put in fences in it? And I'm almost like a broken record. Even the EAC, the other day, uh, I said to them, you know, beyond planting trees, could we plant daffodils, right? I wanna, I wanna, you know, I wanna leverage nature. Uh, and they pointed out to me that daffodils were invasive species and now we shouldn't be planting them. So, you know, back to this particular thing. When I dug more into the native tree ordinance, I found first of all that we were using a very restrictive term, definition of what was native, so plants that grew right across the river in New Jersey were far from being planted here. And with the EAC and with others, we were able to expand that list to really reflect what's native to this area and not have hard stops on artificial boundaries. And that's some of the growth in the list that you've seen. Um, we've also, you know, when I talked to Jim, I think it started with you and your, your many different roles that you've had in the township, right? When this first came up, I think the proposal was, and I don't mean first last year, but first years ago, there was a proposal to include um, 20% of non-natives, and so that's what I posited, 20%. Um, and the EAC again, you know, had some concerns about that. And I think James, even you picked up on that when we went to advertise and said, would we consider, you know, bringing that down to 10%? And to me, the answer is, of course we would, right? Because I'm, I'm about compromise, I'm about trying to find the best basket of goods that we can have. So if you wanna, you know, talk more about what's native, what's not, um, hydrangeas, rip them out, folks, uh, you Japanese or Naples, bye-bye. The kind of apple trees that people have, people can plant stuff on their own property that we can't plant on a public commercial properties. So I hope it's cleared up how this has come to be. That is uh, you know, my tale. I can keep going. I can see you're all fascinated and riveted with, with my um, conversation. But I, I wanted to try to level set as to how, you know, I brought this to the supervisor's attention to try these, these changes. And for all those following at home, look forward to the near future, because we've also been working with the EAC to make quite specific what is invasive and what can't be planted, because we haven't had a rule on that before. So look for that.
Thank you so much, uh, Supervisor Blundy. I, I thought it was important for you to be able to uh, you know, set the tone for what the origin of this was. You know, there's been um, some talk of, of different origins. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we squash those, because those origins that were talked about specifically where the, that a developer came to us and said, we want these specific trees, is um, is completely unfounded and untrue. So I just want everybody to, yeah.
And I thought Kurt had uh, you know, laid that to rest uh, last time, but if it, it needs to be laid to rest. It's not accurate at all. Um, I will say, you know, I am thinking about what is that? I'm gonna call it public space, it's not truly public space, but there is going to be considerable plantings um, at Pricket Preserve. And I want it to be a good balance of, you know, um, not just natives, certainly not invasives, certainly not all those other things that Linda helped bring to our attention, but some plants, there are lots of plants that do well here, that are not toxic to our environment, that don't meet the definition of native, because folks, you had to be here a long time ago to meet the definition of native.
Yeah, and, and to further support that comment, I believe that the, the existing ordinance has been, has been in place for about 15 years now, is that correct? And, and in the history of the 15 years, I don't think that one developer has ever come to us and asked for a variance on that ordinance, correct?
I don't recall any waiver requests. I mean, in, in the 11 to 12 years that I've been doing this work for the township, I do not re, recall any developer requesting a waiver. People, you know, there's lots of waivers requested depending on the circumstances of a project like the, the Prickets Preserve, for example. They may request smaller parking spaces, they may request, you know, different placement of lights, the, the um, number of plot plans, core samples, things like that. I don't recall in all developments, any developer having an issue with the current ordinance.
So, so I, I guess the question is then, then, and this developer has done other business in his township before, correct?
Yes, well, Mr. DeLucca certainly has, uh, I, I don't know in partnership with this, these individuals, he has one now uh, that's going up the, at the, the old um, Razzo property, yes, that, uh, on the, on the, thank you, it's only lived right across the street from there. Um, at the South and, and uh, Yard and Morrisville Road. So there's, you know, there's no request I'm aware of there. I, I know he's, oh, I did uh, uh, Flowers Field, he did the, the residential areas there, he did um, uh, many other projects before.
Did he, did he ever ask for a variance from the, from the ordinance?
No waivers that I've ever, uh, nothing that I've.
So again, just for the record, this specific developer has never once asked for any variance on this ordinance, on any other. variants on this ordinance on any other project that he's ever built in Lower Makefield Township. So to think that he is doing that in this case is absolutely 100% wrong. The origin was ideas by Supervisor Blundy that were, you know, I guess grew and a seed was planted and it grew over years, not to be ironic. So with that being said, I'm going to open it up to any other supervisor comments before I open it up to public comment. Anybody want to chime in? John?
Yeah, I'd rather like to talk about the merits of the case on this particular one. And I took some degree of notes on Supervisor Blundy's comments. She posited two primary arguments, which was one, that we don't have a garden or showstopping garden or park for people. And that may be fair assessment. And it is something that could be worked on. However, that doesn't necessarily require that you throw out the rules of good environmental stewardship. She also posited that we need a place for prom pictures. And that got me thinking and I was thinking of, I don't know if you remember Allen Iverson, right? Prom pictures? We talking about prom pictures? So I went back and I looked at my prom picture and I believe there was a plastic plant in the background. But here's the deal, the biggest thing about my prom picture that, and the reason why I didn't bring it here today is the fashion mistake I made. I wore a red tie. This was the mid eighties, right? People made those kinds of mistakes, right? Fashion mistakes. But I was happy to go to the prom. Listen, to be honest with you, I was so excited to get at least a date, you know what I mean? So very happy with that. Never really thought about the need for special prom pictures. And yeah, I have children have since gone to the prom and we took nice pictures and stuff like that. But again, to me, those two arguments aren't at the root of the issue here as to why we would give up good environmental stewardship. And to me, every, so far, I have not gotten a cohesive argument that supports the need to add non-native invasive species to Lower Makefield Township. It just hasn't been the case. And I can read email after email from concerned residents who rightly say that this is preposterous that we're thinking of it. And today I received a letter, I think all the supervisors received a letter and I'll just, I'll bring it to folks' attention from, from our state senator, who said, dear board members, it's come to my attention that the board is considering a change to Lower Makefield's native plant ordinance to allow for a percentage of non-native plants to be used on township lands and by developers. As I cannot attend your meeting this evening, I am writing to ask that you reject this proposal when it comes before you on tonight's agenda, or alternatively, that you table the proposal pending further discussion. As you know, the board passed the NPO in 2007. It was a package, part of a package of initiatives that those of us who were serving at the time had proposed to protect the environment and make Lower Makefield a more sustainable community. The EAC took the lead in helping to draft the ordinance under the leadership of Mr. Jim Bray, the EAC's chairman at the time. As a master gardener, Mr. Bray knew well the threat that non-native invasive plant species posed to the local ecosystem. In passing the NPO, the board's intent was to promote a more sustainable environment through the use of native plants, which were by definition better adapted to our area. While the NPO was limited in scope, it did not apply to private homeowners, for example. So if you wanted to plant your, oh, that's not in the letter, the board's belief was that it would nonetheless be impactful. We also hope that township's example would lead residents to adopt a similar approach and decide what to plant as a way of saving money by not having to replace non-natives that were not as hardy, while at the same time promoting a more sustainable environment generally. One measure of the success of the program was the fact that over time, the NPO became a model for other communities in Bucks County and beyond. In light of this history, the burden should be on any party proposing to change the ordinance in any way to explain why the change is necessary or in the best interest of the township. To date, I heard no such explanation. The one argument that has been made, as I understand it, is that the change will somehow promote the beautification of the township. That claim does not bear scrutiny, however. There are a wide range of native trees, bushes and other plants that are quite beautiful and complement the local landscape as well. Moreover, I'm not aware of any developer who has objected to the NPO. In fact, it's my understanding that the 15 years the ordinance has been in place, no developer has ever sought an exemption to it. For those reasons, I strongly urge the board to reject the proposed change to the NPO or at a minimum, table the issue pending further discussion. Very truly yours, Steve Sanacero, PA Senate District 10, and he sent that to the EAC and others. I've got five or six more of these I could read all day long. The challenge is that Senator Sanacero's letter covers a lot of the key issues here. For those who are concerned about beautification, I urge you to go to Bowman's Wildflower Preserve. They have an event, normally would have an event in spring, which was the, their primary fundraiser where you get to wear a black tie. And again, as I've gotten better, you don't wear a red tie with a tux. It just doesn't work. But you go there and you wear muck boots and a black tie event. And the surrounding the Bowman's Wildflower Preserve is breathtaking. And guess what? All native species, all native species. So the argument that somehow we need to compromise our environment for non-native species is just plain false. And the best evidence is right next to us at Bowman's Wildflower Preserve. And just at our last meeting, we gave our EAC environmental award to Kona Composting. And we, I learned more about composting, but more importantly, because that was a private company, they couldn't accept the money. Where did they give it? Where did they give that money to? They gave it to Bowman's Wildflower Preserve. It, for me, it's for those who say they don't like the plants that grow here naturally, that they don't like the way the environment is. That's anathema to me. It's like you don't accept Bucks County and the nature of where we live. People chose this area because of its unique eucalyptic nature, because of its natural beauty. And that natural beauty didn't just come in the last 50 years. It's come over hundreds of years, right? Or thousands of years of the environment adapting, right? And now we have a chance to make sure that we can protect, protect our community from invasive species, right? What was it? The Bartlett pear thing that we had where the tree gets ugly, it dies and all all these different tree illnesses and stuff. And listen, if you're someone like me who hates yard work and would astroturf their yard in a minute to save that money and time, I sure as heck don't want to be in a position where I'm hurting the environment. I want to make sure that, and I'm not perfect on this, I've learned over the years, we make sure that we always now plant native species. But, and I'm not the only one, the state of Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania has, is starting to say, listen, Home Depot, listen, Lowe's, you cannot sell these plants in Pennsylvania. And I'm sure proponents of this who've made, in my mind, really weak arguments, really weak. When the vast majority of this, many of us could easily support, right? The changes in adapting calipers and sizes and responses. These are us as a municipality adapting to the needs of developers in the community in a fair-minded way. However, I cannot and will not ever support any change that will bring non-native invasive species. If you've ever had to deal with bamboo, and by the way, had to deal with bamboo, the township has had to deal with bamboo, right? Not just in an ordinance, but farmland preservation, we've had issues with invasive species and having to correct that is expensive and frustrating. And if your only argument is, I don't have a place to get prom pictures, prom pictures, or I don't have a beautiful garden, you're missing, you're solving the wrong problem, right? There is, if you don't like Bucks County and you don't like the plants that are here, there are other communities with different kinds of plants, right? That some you might find more beautiful than others. One of the nice things I like about traveling the country is I get to see different areas. And there's nothing like the smell of eucalyptus in San Diego in a cold morning, right? There are all the parts of the rest of the world that have different plants. And there's no reason why we can't support Bucks County values, Pennsylvania values and our own native plants. I mean, I, it is beyond the pale. And not one person has said to me, hey, John, I think you're wrong on this one, right? Not one. And trust me, I know I tell people about the grocery store rule, right? If people come up to you in the grocery store, right? Because there's no surveying or polls here. People will tell you exactly what they think. Not one person has told me that we really need non-natives, right? Not one person has told me that, you know, we need to have plants that die and cost money and look ugly. Not one person has come to me and said that. I'm waiting. If somebody would tell me, hey, John, you're wrong on this one. But so far, I mean, I can go through a whole series of emails and I know we've got a lot of time here. But at the end of the day, the only argument I've heard for this is prom pictures. And it's frustrating. It's frustrating. I, I.
I appreciate.
And I'm not impugning, I'm not impugning, I haven't suggested any of the questions about how this came about. I haven't talked, all I know is people come up to me and say, is the board really considering changing the native plant ordinance over prom pictures? I'm gobsmacked. And I would love to support the other elements of this ordinance, would love to, that represent how our EAC, how our board works with the community, with developers to serve legitimate goals of the community. But this poison pill or noxious plant, if you will, makes it unacceptable to me, unacceptable. And it's frustrating that it comes to the board, people know that this is just plain off the deep end. And by the way, if I get arguments that, well, other municipalities allow this. Well, you know, the environmental regulations in West Virginia are relatively lax. Does anybody want to live in West Virginia? If you want that, move. You chose Bucks County. You chose Bucks County because of the way it looked, because of the community, because of the commitment to the environment. And this is a horrible step back and wrong. And I will leave it at there.
Thank you. I appreciate your passion around it. Before I take any other comments from a supervisor, Jim, can you just read the ordinance one more time? Because and no disrespect to you, John, I think that you've included invasive many times during your point. And I think that that clouds what the ordinance is because I think the ordinance specifically includes to not include invasive, noxious or alien. Is that correct, Jim?
Correct. To not include invasive, exotic or alien species or any species that are on the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources or Pennsylvania Natural Heritage Program list subject to the approval of an arborist for the township.
So essentially what we're doing, and I don't give you your time, essentially what we're doing is we're following the state of Pennsylvania, right? And what we're also doing is we're following recommendations of the EAC to not include invasive, noxious or alien plants. So I would just want to make sure that there's no clouding of the, because you're right, if I was a resident and somebody was saying to me, you're going to change the ordinance to include noxious plants or invasive species, I would say, well, why are you doing that? We're not doing that.
However, however, that was your compromise after your first go at this. That was your compromise.
Correct.
Right? You know, the EAC has been opposed to this. The planning commission said that they were opposed to this. And like I said, I'm just looking for validation that there's a real case here that can be made for this. If you're going to say, I need examples of plants that are more attractive than native species, right? I just find it's like, oh, I don't like the plants that grow here?
I don't think that's it because every resident in Lower Makefield Township has the ability to go to a Home Depot and buy said plant today and plant six of them in their yard if they want to.
Agree, but here we are, we have the chance. However, we have the chance to protect our public spaces and developer spaces. And by the way, developers didn't complain about it for 15 years.
Correct. So I don't, and then that drives the point that it's not.
There's not a need there.
Well, I don't think it's a developer-driven point. And I'm glad that you brought that up. And I'm glad that Steve mentioned that as well, because it's not a developer-driven point. And I think that that's an important point for everybody to understand. And I totally agree with having a solid plan when it comes to environment. I don't think this is a comprehensive ordinance as it is right now. It doesn't cover 99% of Lower Makefield Township. Anybody on any given day can go to a Home Depot and buy said species and plant it on their private property. You have such trees in your yard right now. Everybody in the audience pretty much has these trees right now, right? Unless they know that they don't. So if it's going to be, if it's going to be true and comprehensive and sincere, it really should cover what it needs to, which is really 99% of the township, not just 1% of what could be possible development. That's why the ordinance didn't really make sense to me as written.
However, it's not 99%. Well, I do agree that a single-family homes are a large majority, right? The township has entered in to solve this issue many times in the past, most recently on the bamboo situation. So the challenge that we have is we want to nudge people to make good choices, good environmental stewardship choices in lieu of having to make the more difficult choice, right? And part of doing this here in the public setting is for us to say, hey, we're nudging you gently. Please use native plants. There are cases when we have to say, hey, you can't plant that anymore, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it causes an issue for other neighbors. This is a relatively, relatively straightforward ordinance. It was forward-thinking 15 years ago. And to suggest that somehow you want to retreat from that, but there's not a case here, not a case. I'm sorry, prom pictures?
Well, we're also retreating from a couple of segments of the ordinance, not just one specifically, right? So we're retreating from calipers, we're retreating from other things that we're saying back 15 years ago, the serving board of supervisors that had a vision of what it should be. But I think now what we have to understand is that the sitting supervisors also have a vision of what it has to be.
But see, let's take that, that's a great argument. That's adapting to science, right? EAC members have said, okay, we've done plantings, we've had situations. We've got to figure out what's the optimal mix or request, right? And they have been very focused on making, these are people who have science backgrounds. Unlike me, right? Just for the record, undergraduate business, master of public administration, just no, no science. However, they've made good adjustments over time to reflect what our legitimate business needs and asks from developers, right? So that, I think we all agree is good. That's what you want, right? Now you take that and you put a poison pill attached to it and we can't support the rest of the good stuff that most of us would say, yes, right? Dan will be tell you exactly on some of the stuff about calipers and choices, which trees to plant, all that sort of stuff. That's us working well, right? And pushing forward. But adding something here to include non-native plants is just plain wrong, wrong. And the case is, I'm, if I can borrow, you know him, he was your favorite sixer. Prom pictures? Really? I mean, really? Prom pictures? That's what we're talking about here? We need, there needs to be a much better case. The administration of the township has made good cases on stuff that they worked through with in EAC. But outside of those two arguments, right? No other argument. There's just nothing there. It's vaporware. Now Supervisor Blundy says, hey, we need a showstopping garden in Lower Makefield. I'd be up for that. We can talk, right? Let's go to the Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve. Let's talk to the community. Let's find a location that would meet that criteria. Let's find that location. I'm there for that. Why? For the same reason that we preserve open space. Communities with open space have much higher property values, 35% more. Communities that have beautiful, and that's a subjective term, right? So you can't trust my opinion on what's attractive or not attractive, right? But things that objectively people say, wow, this is visually attractive, have higher property values as well. I have no problem with working with any supervisor, any circumstance to do that. I just won't ever sacrifice our environment. I won't, won't allow that. I just, and for what gain? Again.
Yeah. No, I, again, I appreciate your passion. I want to make sure I give equal time to the other supervisors. Real quick, before I move on, I do remember during the meeting, I think it was Linda that did come up and speak. And I think she was agreeable to the 10%. I could go back and look at the record, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that she spoke on the record and she said she wasn't agreeable to the 10%. Okay. I don't want to have to go back to the minutes, but I mean, I don't want to have to go back to the minutes. I will if I have to. But with that being said, I'll do my research over here. I'll pass it over to Supervisor Grignier or Weiss. Do you guys have any, any input? I know, Dan, you have, you know, some, some strong feelings about this that you've made, you know, aware during the planning commission and, and, you know, you're in the same position as Supervisor Lewis. So if it is the same position, you know, I respectfully just ask you to keep the position to a short comment.
I'll be happy to take my time or Dr. Weiss, if you'd like to speak.
I'll be happy to take my time or Dr. Weiss, if you'd like to speak, I can let you go first, it's perfectly fine with me.
You can go.
Heard that.
Thank you. Do I have the same position as Supervisor Lewis? To, to an extent. You know, I've been, as the, I guess, I've been called that, since I've joined the board, I've been called a tree hugger for, on multiple occasions by the Republicans for trying to promote the green building ordinance, some sustainability goals that I've tried to incorporate, sometimes successfully, sometimes not. You know, I come from the EAC, so I've been heavily involved in these tree ordinances, this, whether it's this specific one or, or other ones over the years. You know, and I, I try to, uh, not, not to mention, obviously, this is my livelihood, my education, my everyday. I'll even say passion in some, some sense in that I've been studying this specific stuff for, for so long. So that's why it pains me when we're, this, this board where I think all of us ran on being pro-environment, pro-open space, pro, you know, pro-sustainability, uh, however you define that. To, to listen tonight to what I would consider greenwashing of a really bad ordinance change. You know, we're trying to make, uh, the allowance of non-native plants sound like a not that bad thing that actually make the township better by making it prettier or something else. And that couldn't, honestly, that couldn't be further from truth. Whenever you plant non-natives, that's, you know, many of these non-native plants, you know, over the years, you know, if you talk to, you know, we're seeing a lot in the newspaper recently from the Department of Agriculture, where they're banning these plants because years and years ago, someone thought they were pretty, a calorie pair, you know? They don't realize that they've become invasive 20, 30, 40, 50 years after the fact. And they take over an area and they destroy environments. They just, they, they make it inhabitable for multiple species that are endemic to Bucks County, lower Makefield, Pennsylvania. You know, we have approximately 2,100 natives, native plant species, many of which are gorgeous, absolutely beautiful. I, I use them in some of my, in some of my landscape designs that I've done professionally over the years throughout Pennsylvania region. They, they're absolutely beautiful. Whether that's a tree, a shrub, a native grass, a native flower, you know, they're, they're just gorgeous. So the argument that we need to plant something that is non-native to make Pennsylvania beautiful. I don't know, I've, I've lived up and down the East Coast, I've lived as, you know, I've lived down near where Fred is right now. And I've lived far north as Maine and everywhere in between. I've been around Central and South America and the Caribbean doing these types of plans. And I got to tell you, there's a reason I live here. I think it's, it's gorgeous, there's great diversity. You know, we have our seasons, so we have, we have, uh, changes in how our plants look, uh, that are just native. And I think it's wonderful. So when we, when we allow for non-natives, you know, just to reiterate the science behind this. When you plant non-native species, whether they're on a list or not, when you plant non-native species, you will, and this is not a yes, this is not an opinion, this is accepted science. And I want to repeat that, this is accepted science, not my personal opinion. When you plant non-native species, you reduce native habitat. That includes native habitat for pollinator species that are fundamental to our agricultural economy in Pennsylvania. That includes other native species that may be fundamental to someone's, you know, uh, someone's enjoyment or quality of life. Whether that's a plant species or an animal species or bird species. We're seeing that bird species numbers drastically reduced because they no longer have access. You know, there's a reduction in native plants because of development, agriculture or non-native species taking over over time that have come in. And it's, it's just what's happening. So we are going backwards. We are going to have a negative effect, direct effect on our environment, not only in lower Makefield. Okay, because our environment doesn't understand political boundaries. We, we bordered Delaware River. We have the opportunity to get invasive species that will disperse via the Delaware River, via bird species that fly north and south.
And can I just pause you one second? Uh, I just, I, I really need to make sure that you're clearly using the word non-native and not using invasive because the ordinance is not calling for invasive species. And, and if every time you interject that word into your discussion.
James, okay, let me explain to you, because this is what I study.
Not confusing.
This is, this is my professional background.
Okay.
I am of the opinion that you don't know the difference between a non-native invasive, alien, exotic or noxious species. You have used those interchangeably. First of all, let me be very clear. The word noxious is not used once in our ordinance, not once. Okay?
Can you, can we get clarity around that? Cause I was.
I just did a search of the entire ordinance, noxious is not included.
Is noxious included on the ordinance, Jim?
I don't believe noxious is included in this ordinance. However, we are working with the EAC to amend chapter 84, which are, is our ordinance on noxious weeds that are currently prohibited. And we're expanding that ordinance to talk about not just noxious weeds and plants, but also invasive species too.
Okay. And, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Dan, I just want to make sure that there's clarity. When you're speaking from a technical professional standpoint to general public, the difference between a non-native plant and a noxious invasive or alien plant? Cause there is, we can agree there's a difference, correct?
There's no, there's no difference between a non-native and alien plant. Neither one of them originated in lower Makefield or Bucks County or Pennsylvania for that matter.
Okay, but how about invasive? Is there a difference between non-native and invasive?
Invasive plants are very, invasive plants are aggressive species.
Okay, is there a difference between a non-native and an invasive plant?
There are, it's a subset, some can be both. Many plants are both and you don't know that.
Can, can you have a non-native plant that's not invasive?
Would you please let me speak? Just because you are wanting to greenwash this and make it sound like this is the way to go, let me speak, please.
No, I understand, I will. But if you're going to speak from a technical expert standpoint, I want to make sure that you're relaying to the public the difference between non-native and invasive.
Invasive is a subset of non-native.
Does every non-native plant can be invasive?
If it's, the science is still open on that. Non-native plants that aren't currently listed as invasive can, can eventually change to be an invasive species. That is what we know. And we won't know that until it happens. That's what happened with the calorie pear, that's what happened with Japanese barberry, that's what happened with purple loosestrife, that's what happened with fragmites, that's what happened with kudzu, myelominit, Japanese maple. I can go on and on and on and on.
So originally they were introduced as non-native and then they became invasive?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any examples of plants that were introduced as non-native that did not become invasive?
Some of them, they can actually inoculate so that they can't grow anymore. But again, those are non-native species that still have the same negative effect on the environment in that they take away from native species. In that it destroys native habitat. Because native species such as other plants that depend on the native species and animals and bugs and bunnies. And I'll be very simple about it. Other species that depend on the natives can no longer successfully thrive in their native habitat because those plants no longer available to them because they've either been outcompeted by something else or someone decided to plant something else. So let, let me read to you very quickly from the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, something that they say. And this is after they, they decided to, uh, add a few more plants recently to their, to their unacceptable list, as I'll, I'll refer to it. Pennsylvania is working to repair the damage done by plants that were introduced to our landscape decades ago without foresight and how they might harm our environment and food supply. That's from the Agriculture Secretary Russell Redding. Banning the sale of invasive plants and educating homeowners and consumers to plant native species today are both vital for potential, for protecting our environment, our food supply and our economy tomorrow. Similar to that, this is the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They're telling you how to, how do you manage invasives? You manage invasives by planting natives. The key to controlling invasives is to promote healthy native plant communities. By keeping a native, healthy ecosystem on your property, invasives will have less opportunity to invade. Planting native species using local nurseries that provide native alternatives and choosing the right species for the site can all help limit invasives. Okay?
I just have a follow-up question to that. How many of our local nurseries sell only native species?
I can't actually, I know that when I have to buy thousands and thousands of plants, and I, I literally do buy thousands and thousands of plants a year. I have a requirement when I buy those plants and they're not at a premium, I'll say it, say it just like that. The, the same size as what we have in our ordinance. Every one of them has to be native. Every single plant that I, that I do, as part of the work that I have to do, has to be native. And that's because state agencies will not accept, state and federal agencies, I should say, will not accept the planting of non-native species because of the potential harm they, they pose to our environment. That's a non-starter. If I ever propose that, I would be kicked out of the room and have, never have any, any, uh, plan approved again. I'd get laughed out.
Yeah, I'm just going back to the question, how many of our local nurseries sell non-native species?
I, I, I could ask you the same question. I've never gone and asked them because I don't buy na- non-native species.
But I mean, wouldn't that be a bigger concern if we're going to be truly, uh, passionate about the subject and have a comprehensive plan?
And we've talked about, I know where you're going. So what we've talked about before, right? Is, well, if, if we really want to make a difference here, then why don't we just ban any sale of non-native species in the township? Whether it's through our, through developments or homeowners or whatever.
Correct.
So, and I, I get that to an extent. However, we are, we are a federal government, right? We have different levels of government where we each have our own jurisdictions and our own different items that we have. One, that we, that we have jurisdiction over and two, that we can actually enforce, right? So what's, what do we have jurisdiction over and what's enforceable? So in a perfect world, yeah, we could say, you know what? Stop planting non-natives just to protect our environment. That being said, we have jurisdiction over lower Makefield Township, that's one. But I would argue that we have the most enforcement ability over our SALDO. Right? So if we're going to enforce something, we enforce it through the SALDO, which was, in this case, this regulation was put in place since 2007. So every land development that included a landscaping plan that came through our SALDO, came through, you know, the room you're sitting in since 2007, had to subscribe to this ordinance and only plant native plants. That is a great thing. I want to say a big thank you to the EAC, Center San Antonio, and all the supervisors that had the foresight back then to put this ordinance in place because they've been protecting our township for the last 15 years and helping to improve our native environment the last 15 years, despite all of the development that's gone on. Right? So maybe we don't have a lot of.
My only point to that is probably over those 15 years, we have non-native trees and hundreds of thousands that have been planted by individual homeowners. So I think we're only taking a small segment of this entire thing and, and just really breaking it down just to, to new development. I, I'm, I'm, I believe in what you're saying. I, I truly believe in what you're saying, but my thing is it doesn't seem genuine when it only affects literally 1% of what we're looking at. If a, a developer has to plant.
Hold on, James, just listen to what you just said to me. You're telling someone who is passionate about this, is an environmental scientist that does this for a living, has studied this for years and years, that I'm not being genuine because I'm trying to protect native species?
No, 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 no.
I'll give you an opportunity to apologize for that statement because that hits at my core.
No, what I'm saying is that the ordinance in place doesn't seem that it's effective because it's only effective such a small percent of what is happening in the township. And that's in the 15 years that we've limited non-native trees being planted, tens of thousands of non-native trees have been planted in the township. So what's the point?
Absolutely, I would disagree with that wholeheartedly.
Well, how can you, if you can't tell me how many non-native, how many local nurseries sell non-natives?
Developers help to drive.
Developers, no, no, no.
No, you're not, let, let me finish. Developers have an effect on the market when it comes to plants, when it comes to nurseries. If developers are only buying native plants, right? Those are the folks that nurseries sell to in bulk. Large, large, they are the guaranteed sale. So by default, they're going to carry more native plants.
But remember, no.
And it's also the trend.
Right?
What's that?
This hasn't been challenged in 15 years by one.
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, you've argued that Supervisor Grinear's point, if no developer has asked for a waiver.
Correct.
There's no need.
No, a sitting supervisor is acting for a change in the ordinance.
Right, but, but.
It's the sitting supervisors who started the ordinance, right?
Right, but 15 years of supervisors of both parties of every political stripe, sane and insane Republican and Democrat, have all supported the native plant ordinance.
I don't know if any of them have actually really.
And as it relates to this particular case, and I, I hate to interrupt because I'm actually intruding on Supervisor Grinear's time and I, I apologize because I didn't ask for him to yield. But, uh, this is only about SALDO, right? So this is a change for SALDO. If your argument is, well, it's not genuine unless we go and change the, uh, for personal property, that, that can be an option, right? Uh, am I allowed to write in ordinance and put that on the table that would apply that for personal property? I mean, under your argument, I should be able to dial up Mr. True Love here. If you take my call and say, hey, can we, can we work on an ordinance here that would truly protect to, to your level of, of?
It's, it's not to my level and I'm saying it's to the level that the passion seems to be around.
So, may I continue?
People that are, that are opposing this or saying, we're opposing this because it's going to introduce these non-native invasive.
Respectfully though, what you've done is you've argued that we're only allowed to use certain words. You've used ad hominem attacks of suggesting that we're not genuine because we're focusing on the, the, what is on the table right now.
If you're, if you're interpreting my, my speech as non-genuine to, to your passion, then I apologize. That's, that's not what my intent is at all. So I'll.
Respectfully, I would allow, I would.
I'll, I'll give the, I'll give the time back to Dan. Dan, if you have anything else, if you want to wrap it up and we'll, we'll move on to Supervisor Weiss and then we'll take some public comments.
Sure, a couple, a couple of key items here. So one, you know, one of the, one of the things that we say in here is hire an arborist for the township. So we're going to take on additional cost whenever a development comes through to have an arborist look at every plant list. No one on our staff is an arborist. Arborists really aren't all that good at doing this. So whenever a developer comes in and wants to put in 10% of non-native plants, then we're going to have to go do that. Secondly, we say 10% non-native plants. I don't know how that's defined. See, a shrub versus a tree is very different things. So if I get one tree that's massive and nine shrubs, is that 10%? Or is it 10% of the basal area, 10% of the, of the, of the, of the, of the cover type? I don't know what that means. So that 10%, any developer can argue that any way they want to. So I just, it's, it's, this is terribly written. In addition to that, there was a reference to the, was it the Pennsylvania Natural Heritage Program and, and DCNR lists? I don't know what lists those are because there isn't a Natural Heritage Program list out there. The only state list that I'm aware of is the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture's controlled plant and noxious weed lists. That's not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance and the ordinance only, that doesn't even mention the word noxious, which is the worst level of species you can have. Right? So I don't know how this was written, who wrote it when it comes to these items? Because I know the EAC knows this stuff and I know they're opposed to this particular item within, within the ordinance. But we would have to throw out and rewrite that to get it right. Otherwise we're going to go to court every time because nothing in there is factually correct or accurate in terms of how these things are regulated at the state or federal levels. So that, that on its own, you can't vote in favor of this ordinance because it's not correct. You're putting the township at risk by voting on an ordinance that is not written correctly. In addition, I would not hire an arborist at all. And by the, by the way, I know we tried to greenwash this and, and say, you know, Supervisor Blundy is the one that brought all this up and somehow it got on the agenda without the board talking about it ahead of time. But just remember, the, in the last meeting, our township manager said, when this came up, he went to DeLuca to Prickett Preserve and asked them what they wanted on the list, what they would want to plant that were non-native. And they provided, Bowler Engineering, which is DeLuca's, or I'm sorry, Prickett Preserve's engineer, provided a long list of non-native plants that they want to plant. Most of those made it into the original list before the EAC saw it and tore it apart. Because many of them were invasive, some of them were actually poisonous, I'm told. Because many of them were invasive. Some of them were actually poisonous, I'm told. So let's not white, let's not overly greenwash this and no developer had any say in this. Whether the developer went to Kurt first or Kurt went to the developer, to me, that is, that is just plain wrong. That we would try and rewrite an ordinance of this type. By asking for a specific developer's input when that developer is going to, gonna, has to come before this board for approvals. I want to make sure that's on the record. Now I understand Supervisor Blundy that you want the ornamental plants because they're pretty and I understand your desire. I, I truly do to have prettier landscape plants and I would love to work with you on that, on tree plans. I would. I love designing that stuff. That's, that's obviously I'm passionate about that. And I can show you some of the prettiest native plants around. I'm sure members of the EAC would want to do that too. And I, there's, I think we all have ideas on that. But. After that point, and I, I respect that point. I, I don't want to make it sound like I don't. But we need to be very clear. That a lot of these plants and a lot of this discussion came from the discussions between our township manager. Who never asked our permission to go do this. To go to. A specific developer. He didn't go to Troylo and 20 other developers that have a history in, in the township to kind of canvass them like he does with us. But he went to one specific one who has something coming. I have an issue with that. I'll be, I don't, I don't like that.
Oh, Dan.
But that's what happened.
Dan. Can I interrupt you?
What would you like to say?
You know. I don't, I don't want to go back and forth too much, but. That's not what happened. And I understand that you're passionate about this.
He made that statement at the last meeting. I want to be very clear.
That's not exactly what he said, Dan.
I'm reading it in the newspaper article.
That's not exactly what he said. And the reality is, right? And. You know, we have worked together and we did work together and we will work together on making sure that everything that comes through. Can be, you know, um. What we both I think want. But I, you know, it, it pains me. Pains me, right? I said, forgive my use of these expressions and then, you know, John couldn't, he couldn't abide by that, right? He had to mock me. How about it, John? It's good. Prom, 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 prom. But when we. Attack our staff, right? And when we. Take negative influences and take every opportunity to assume the worst in each other, then you know, we're just not going to get anywhere.
Right.
Thanks for your comments.
So in, in closing, I'll just say, I agree. With our EAC, I agree with, I know not everyone here is on, on Facebook anymore. I know some of you have blocked me on Facebook, so you won't see what I post either. But I agree with the dozens of residents. That have commented, there's several people that have emailed us. I, I agree with the Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Conservation, Natural Resources, the Department of Agriculture, Bowman's Hill Wildflower Reserve. Senator Santa Sierra, our EAC, the Planning Commission, and scientists all over. That say. This is a terrible idea to allow for non-natives. And I hope when there's another election in a year and a half or two. That we can, just like we did with the green building ordinance, that we can get folks in here that will go back in day one, change this back. Cause I'm feeling like this is going to lose 3-2. And I, I, it pains me to say this, but it's, it's. It's one of the. Worst ordinance changes I've ever seen. It's, it's honestly embarrassing that we're doing this.
Just for the record, you'd be, you would, you would be amenable to a different ordinance regarding this? Or none at all?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, I'm glad you asked that, James. I am 100% in favor. And I've had these discussions. Forever with, with resident, with, uh, the, when I was on the AC. 100% in favor in terms of changing the allowable sizes. And various, uh, references to caliper sizes, root ball sizes. Uh, heights, et cetera, to. Because the science supports that. Right? The science over time, when, when projects like. Large-scale projects that where you plant a lot of plants, like the ones that I do, you learn over time. What species grow best at what size when you plant them, which ones are the most, how they're the most successful. And I believe that the numerous changes that were made to those items. In, in the. In the ordinance are, are just fine. I, I, I would support those. Any, what, then on the flip side of that. Any reference to allowing for non-natives. At all. Uh, 100% against that, right? I don't have to restate all that. And I would also point out. That. The definition of what constitutes 10% is very unclear, very risky. In, in botany and, um, projects of, and when you're actually planting plants, 10%. It can mean 10 different things to 10 different folks. So that's putting it things at risk. There are different ways to analyze what 10% means. And from a scientific perspective, because one of the things that we have to do with some of these projects when we do plantings. Is talk about percent cover, percent basal area, percent stems, percent this, percent that, et cetera. That, that's a, that's a, that's a real issue where that 10% to me doesn't mean much because it's not defined. And then all those other, all those other things, they're just not. All those other words that, that we throw out there. I don't. They're not defined and the, the, uh. The regulatory, um. When we refer to various departments in the, at the state of Pennsylvania. The references we make. They're not real. So none of those actually work either. So there's even if you agreed with. Adding 10%. Or some number of non-natives. What you're trying to do to protect that. Protect against things going awry. Is you, you don't have those protections in place. Like the way this is written.
Thank you Supervisor Grinear, Supervisor Weiss.
Well, um. I really don't know where to begin. Even though my. Knowledge of botany. Plant biology is, um. Weathered. I do know my way around plant. And I do know my way around Saldo ordinances. And I do know. The recommendations of the Bucks County Planning Commission. And I have done research on many of the ordinances. In Bucks County. Since this first came up to the board. And as Senator Santa Sierra said, this is a model. This ordinance is a model. It's a model for every other township not to follow. And I understand. Why. And I understand why Supervisor. McCartney, our chair. Is so passionate about. The effect on the environment of homes versus developments. And. I have a real. Real hard time. Syncing up development with. Thousands, thousands of homeowners. Not only in Lower Makefield Township. But in our surrounding townships in the county. And much of what. Supervisor Grinear says is true. But as I munch on an apple every other day. I know that there's room for non-native. Trees. And shrubs. In our township. Hundreds and hundreds of years of successful. Breeding. Genetic manipulation. When done properly. Can be a welcome addition to our local environment ecosystem. Now. If some of the wording. Is not. Within. Propriety. I have no problem, which. Mr. Meduski can give us some. Context on that. I would be open to change my mind on, on, on this ordinance so that we can get. A better ordinance on it. But. Since virtually every neighboring municipality. To Lower Makefield has non-native trees in their Saldo. Including New Jersey across the river, which as far as I'm concerned is the same ecosystem. I have no problem. In voting in favor of this ordinance. Understanding everything that Mr. Grinear said. I'm not too, you know. My prom days are over. My son's prom days are over. My grandkids, they're almost at the point where their prom days are. So. I, I, you know, but, and I'm not making fun of proms. I understand the need to want for. Beautiful gateways into the township. And I understand that. If a developer so wishes and the township so agrees. A small number of non-native. Trees. Can be a plus. To the township. You know, just for being able to say you can plant up to 10% of non-native trees, doesn't make it happen. It still has to go through the Saldo process. Landscape plan has to be approved by the appropriate committees. And if the township. Those that make these decisions do not want these trees, those plans will not be approved. But we do open the door to some. Acceptable. Non-native trees. Not invasive, not noxious. Yes, alien. I'm kind of trying to be a realist on this. And, um, since Mr. Meduski has joined us again, if you can. Give us some context on. On. Some of Mr. Grinear's, um, comments about. You know, what is noxious, what's not noxious, what kind of lists are there? Uh, is there a DCNR list? Is there a heritage list? Uh, that, that has certain trees that, um. Should not be planted.
You're on you, Jim.
I was eating cookie. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, sorry, I didn't share. There actually is a DCNR list of invasive plants in Pennsylvania. It's on their homepage. And I think the Natural Heritage Program, I, someone had. That at the last meeting. Um, but to the extent that they do come up with a list that. Of plants that should not be planted, we would follow that. As far as noxious weeds, they are currently regulated under chapter 84 of our Township Code. So that goes even to people's individual properties. That you're not allowed to, allowed to grow. Trees that are on those lists, uh, in the state. And we're clarifying that with the new ordinance that should be coming forward to you. Uh, from the EAC. And, uh, basically, uh. Those noxious weeds. Are not allowed to be grown, stuff like tree of heaven. You know, if it's found on your property similar to bamboo, you need to take steps to eradicate it. Uh, with the recent addition of the. Calorie pears. Bradford pears, those are ones that. You're not going to be allowed to let them run amok on your property and spread all over the place. I know I actually have a couple of those in my front yard that. More we talk about it, the more I'm thinking maybe I should take them down, especially since they do smell in the spring. Um, but it is something that, uh. You know, there is a difference between noxious invasive. Noxious has been controlled by the township. For over 20, 25 years now. By our ordinance.
Now. Are there any townships? You know, that, that prohibit, other than Lower Makefield prohibit the non-natives? That you know?
I, I looked at a bunch of townships that are around us. And basically, uh. I looked at Buckingham Township has no requirement. Doylestown says that native species are preferred, but they don't say they're required. Falls Township says that. 50% of replacement trees must be native. Middletown Township has no requirement. Northampton Township says that native species are preferred but not required. Solberry Township says native species are required, except it does allow for non-native. Flowering species. Uh, plus a few evergreen and deciduous species. We of course were only looking at the flowering species. Uh, Upper Makefield also, uh, says that native species are preferred. Not required. And Plumstead Township also allows non-native. So those are some of the local ones. And. Uh, when this came up, I know I went back and looked at. Uh, different sources. One was the Pennsylvania Native Plant Society. And they gave a list of. Uh, ordinances that can be looked at, one of which was ours as a matter of fact. But all of the other ones that they had listed. Do allow for a certain number of. Non-native trees to be used in landscaping. And typically a much higher percentage than what we would have. So we're on the low end of allowing non-natives. Compared to what's out there for the most part.
Jim, I'm sorry, just for clarification, you say Upper Makefield?
Yeah, Upper Makefield native species are preferred, not required.
Where's Bowman's Tower located?
Upper Makefield and Solberry.
Solberry Township? What is Solberry's?
Uh, they allow, uh, they say that native species are required, except they do allow for some non-natives. Uh, the Costa Dogwood, the Okami cherry. The Oriental cherry and the Ivory silk lilacs.
Okay, thanks.
So in the 15 years that we've had. The current ordinance. No other township has model us.
Uh, not in this area.
Has any, has, has, in your, to your knowledge, is any. Any township or, or municipality, um. Sought to have such an ordinance? That you know, that.
Um, I'm not aware of that. I know that. The EAC has made outreach to other municipalities on. A variety of initiatives. I'm not sure about. This specific ordinance, but I know they've, uh, tried to promote some of their environmental friendly ideas. To other municipalities over the years. I'm just not sure if this is one of them. I know, uh. I think one other town just reached out to me recently. Asking some questions about this. I think from Chester County.
Great, great. You know, I, I. Heard words such as the fact that. Impplied that. Members of this board are not concerned with the environment. And. You know, basically. The three members of the board. Of the five that are here, well, one member wasn't on the board at the time. Um, the three, three of the four members that were, that were here in 2018 or was it 2019? I forget now. The years are starting to blur. Were the only supervisors that. Protected. That Catherine Burke Nature Preserve. Where one supervisor who. Speaks so eloquently about the environment. Didn't want to preserve the 36 acres. Uh, I'll just leave it at that. And, um, I don't think there's anything more for me to add. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And just for the record, I, I am looking at this. I, I believe you're right. The. Wildlife Preserve lot is located in Solberry Township. The adjacent, um, lot to it is located in, uh. Is Upper Makefield. So yeah, it's, it's, it's the two lots. Um, one is Solberry and then the other one is Upper Makefield, so. Okay, uh, any other comments from supervisor? I think we've heard enough from the supervisors. Is there any public comment regarding, uh, regarding this issue?
We do have a few callers on the line.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll take the callers first. If that's okay with you guys? We'll take the callers first.
Lisa is now joining the room. Lisa's now in the room.
Thank you, Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome to the meeting. Can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Lisa Tenny, 156 Pinnacle Circle, Yardley, PA. Um, thank you Board of Supervisor Lewis and Grinear for. Thank you, Board of Supervisor Lewis and Griner for your insightful comments. I believe Linda of the EAC said a plant that is today non-native now can be invasive later. Cultivars can even facilitate this. And I believe a 10% non-invasive plantings can be invasive tomorrow. And an example of this is the Bradford Pear, which was an ornamental tree widely used in new development built in LMT during the 1990s, for it has pretty white flowers in the spring. This past December of 2021, the PA Department of Agriculture officially declared this tree is noxious and an invasive weed that's able to spread and take root and choke out native species in natural areas and parks. This type of planting does not sustain native wildlife. For this reason, even the 10% addition of non-natives to the existing ordinance should be reexamined and left out as originally opposed and updated. What we plant today has implications for the future. And this Bradford Pear is a perfect example. With regard to prom pictures, we're fortunate to live in houses that have a backyard that we can plant anything in. Five Mile Woods and Lake Ashton are perfect prom picture places. Even Delaware Canal. And if that isn't sufficient, you can make one virtually, I suppose, the younger generation can. We don't live in New York City or Central Park. You can't make a dense development look good like Precaboots Preserve, no matter how you dress it up. A dense development does not withstand the test of time. And you can compare that to Oxer Valley Mall, probably built 30 years ago, to a national park, right? So one has natural beauty and one does not. And the logic with the Board of Supervisors, oh, this municipality does this and, and this one does that and we can't, that sounds like an argument of a teenager with a parent, right? So, you know, yeah, do whatever you want, but you know, there's consequences. And the ordinances you listed in the neighboring communities are, you know, they still have land being developed. They're more rural. Unfortunately, all the municipalities south, you know, if they have any open land and we don't have much of it, they are, you know, they don't need to make an ordinance. They don't have any, you know, non-natives. So really, you know, you can't compare municipalities. We're Lower Makefield and you're the Board of Supervisors. So make the most educated and scientific decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Linda. And just for the record, if this ordinance passed, I'm Lisa, I'm sorry. If this ordinance, if the ordinance passed, it would still put us head and shoulders above every other municipality around us when it came to non-native trees.
And that's why you should keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, if the new ordinance passed, which allowed for 10%, it would still put us head and shoulders above all other municipalities regarding this. Is there anybody else on the line?
I would disagree with you on that because that's, that's an opinion. That's not a, any scientific fact.
Well, if there's, if the other, well, I think Jim named a bunch of municipalities that have zero guidance around this, right?
It, it doesn't matter. It's to Lisa's, to Dr. Tenny's point, you know, making that type of argument is just, if they, if they don't do it, why can't I? Is, I feel like, you know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I have that argument with my four and seven-year-olds on a daily basis.
Well, I think if the original intent of the, of the ordinance was to set a standard for all municipalities in Lower Bucks County and none of them followed suit, then it does, there is an argument for that. Right?
Not at all.
Okay. Do we have any other callers on the line?
Before we go to the next caller, if I may.
Sure.
You know, I, I hear what Ms. Tenny is saying. But in this case, we're the parent, we're the decision makers. We decide what is going to be done in this township as we're obligated to do as elected officials. But I do appreciate what Ms. Tenny, Dr. Tenny has, has stated.
Thank you, sir. Is there another caller on the line?
Yes, we are adding Adam to the room. Adam is now in the session.
Thank you, Adam. Can you state your full name and address for the record?
Hi, Adam Steinberger, 1298 Revere Road.
Okay. You can go ahead with your, with your point, your opinion.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not going to say anything that I don't think has been, you know, said already, but it just, it seems, you know, ridiculous. You know, that it seems that there's a, an ordinance in place that a lot of folks agree makes sense. There's been zero opposition to it up until recently by, you know, by a, seems like a small group. And, you know, at the end of the day, it is a step back in the, in the wrong direction. There, you know, it's better than 20%, it's better than 30%, of course. But it still seems that it is unnecessary and it seems to be working. Sure, there's improvements that can be made. But, you know, it, it seems like a slippery slope to me. As far as the development issue, you know, I, I was under the impression that it was on the developers, but that actually makes me more opposed to this, hearing that it isn't. That there's no, you know, real reason coming from this argument. And, you know, as far as the education, of course, but, you know, as, as supervisors Lewis and Griner both, you know, mentioned, there are hundreds of trees, species that are native, hundreds of flowering species, you know, et cetera, thousands and thousands of native species that can bloom year round, different times of the year. They'll have the ability to, you know, do well, frankly, in a house that stayed in our ecosystem. They align with the soil makeup. They can, you know, meet the different needs based on the sun. And, you know, it just seems to me that this is ridiculous and, you know, I, I love this, this town. I recently moved there. But there's a lot of things to, to think about and it seems nuts that so many people have spent this much time on something as backwards as, as this particular ordinance. So, so that's, you know, that's my point. Seems like it's moving along, but, you know, I just wanted to communicate that and, and just, you know, have folks keep that in mind.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else on the line?
Yes, Kathleen is being added to the room now.
Thank you.
Kathleen is now in the session.
Hi Kathleen, can you state your name, full name and address for the record, please?
Sure. It's Kathleen Herco, 1450 Dolington Road.
Thank you. And your comment?
Yeah. So I, I really don't feel like I'm going to change anybody's mind here because it's pretty obvious where this is going, but I can't help but just give my opinion. I have animals, outdoor animals. I'm dedicated here not to using pesticides on my property. I've given up a beautiful green lawn for the health of the environment, for the animals, the insects on my property. And in LMT, there's a large group of residents who are planting native plants. We're sharing native plants. And we're dedicated to this movement to add more native plants to Lower Makefield. I only buy natives. I've been removing any plants on my property that are not native. I buy most of my plants from Bowman's Wildflower Preserve. We're surrounded by farmland, preserved farmland woods. I do not want to be responsible for spreading any invasive, non-native plants into that woods. Last year I planted milkweed on my property. I brought caterpillars in. I watched 46 chrysalis monarch, turn into monarch butterflies. If it was not for the natives, for them to feed on, they would not survive. We need to have more natives for the insects, for our food, for so many reasons. And we have a large movement in LMT, dedicated people to planting natives. Please do not make this change. We need this for the future of our planet and our insects. Let's do better than the other municipalities, please.
Thank you for your comment and I appreciate your efforts. We need more residents like you.
There are plenty, there are plenty of residents like me, believe me, there are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Are there any more online comments?
There is no more public comment.
Okay, so we have some public comment in the room. Members, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Bray and I'm a resident of Lower Makefield Township. I'm also a member of the Environmental Commission in Lower Makefield Township. Also, I have been a Penn State Master Gardener for over 18 years. And currently I am a naturalist at Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve. And routinely give tours regarding the native plant flora in the township. Between maybe 20 and 30 tours a year, and I've been doing this for quite a while. My father's favorite statement was, if it's not broken, don't fix it. When we go back to 2006 in Lower Makefield Township, Lower Makefield Township was a lackluster environmental community. At that time in 2006, a perfect environmental storm developed. For the first time in the history of Lower Makefield Township, the board was composed primarily of Democrats. And these Democrats had a real environmental bent. At the same time, the EAC that I had become a member of was in the process of being revitalized. I talked to the board members, primarily Steve Sanosiro, who was a real advocate of moving forward with environmental ordinances. And I said, if we can get some really good, capable people, we can really make magic happen in this township. Within a couple of years, we were fortunate enough to get some very capable, talented people who are willing to work hard to make Lower Makefield Township an environmental showpiece. Within three years, we set environmental history. We came up with a low-impact development stormwater management. That was the envy of any township. We put into effect a green building code. That was the first such code for a municipality in the state of Pennsylvania. We also put in an incredibly innovative native plant ordinance that applied to developments and township properties. This is not a draconian ordinance. It does not apply to individual homeowners. Legally, there is, I don't believe, under current law, there is no way that could be done. But through a process of education, our goal was that the individual homeowners themselves would start putting a lot more native plants in their yards. And that has happened dramatically over the years. About 15 years ago, if you went to a Lowe's and you went to a Home Depot and you went to Shady Brook, where a lot of our township people shop, you would see very, very few natives. I purchased currently a lot of my natives from Lowe's, Home Depot and Shady Brook. They are in the mainstream. They were starting to be in the mainstream when we put in the native plant ordinance because they were readily available for the trade in large quantities. But not so for the individual homeowners. Now they are in the mainstream. You want to get nice native plants at a relatively inexpensive cost. You can go to Lowe's. You can go to Home Depot and you can go to Shady Brook as well as other nurseries. So they are there and they are being planted in Lower Makefield Township. Another clarification, the 10% non-natives, and John actually pointed this out too. We are not talking about invasives. The 10% that the board is talking about are introduced plants. The problem is, we don't know what's going to happen to those plants. Currently, they have to be non-native. Two years, six months, 10 years, 20 years from now, we simply do not know what's going to happen. The dangers of this are quite obvious. All we have to do is look outside Lower Makefield Township building at the row of Bradford Pears. They bloom about two weeks a year and they're very pretty. They have turned out to be an environmental nightmare. 10 times over. The fact is that when we put introduced plants into the township, we simply do not know what's going to happen to them. Even if they're not invasive, and some will turn out to be non-invasive, we simply don't know that. But they're taking up space for native plants that give back to the environment. Let me give you just a little example of how this works. Let's say in Bowman's Hill, we discovered a boxwood. Boxwood is a pretty plant, but it's non-native. And you'll notice it's pristine. There's nothing nibbling that plant or anything like that because of co-evolution. Now, assume that that boxwood disappears. Well, not disappears. Insects cannot eat that because they did not co-evolve with it. So what happens ultimately? The insects start to disappear. The insects are eaten by birds. It's a transfer of energy. Birds don't eat plants. They eat the insects that eat the plants. The birds start to disappear. When the birds disappear, they don't defecate in the woods. And this is a prime source of regeneration of forest. So when this happens, the forests start to disappear. When the forests start to disappear, erosion starts. When erosion starts, sediment flows into our stream. This pollutes the stream. So what we end up with is a seemingly innocuous planting of a non-native. And yet in the long run, it affects the quality of our air and it affects, it affects the equality of our water. That's why we are in the forefront in Lower Makefield Township with promoting native plants. It's because, this is not a plant ordinance. This is an environmental ordinance. It's withstood the test of time. And one of the reasons of that is because it was written very, very well at the time. We did a good job on that. In 15 to 16 years, not one developer has had any issue with that. So that means to me, they understand the benefits of native plants and that they're readily available. And they also realize that these plants last longer and they don't die. So the attrition rate is lower. So that translates to more money in their pocket. Now Supervisor Blundy, I guess in the middle of 2021, suggested that there were not enough beautiful plants. And this vast array of native plants that we had on the list, literally hundreds and hundreds of natives. And every one of them, you know, quite striking. So that being said, we said, okay, well, let's add some more natives. So we worked together on this. Now, the original list was incredibly comprehensive. The ones we added are good. Or they probably as good as the original list, probably not quite as good, but they're okay. If they were really super good as the original list, they would have been on that list. So what we did is So what we did is we added fifty-six percent more flowering trees. We added eighty-three percent more flowering shrubs. Now cultivars are acceptable under the terms of our ordinance. So what you're looking at, as far as flowering trees are concerned, is two to three hundred selections. If you're looking at flower shrubs, it's off the wall. It might be as high as a thousand plants. Now, with that kind of lexicon, I would think that that would suit anybody's discriminating palate. They're there, they're available. And when you talk about maybe other townships not having the same ordinance we do, when you go back fifteen years, they had nothing to do with native plants. Every single one of them that was just about mentioned pulled from our ordinance. Did they take the whole thing? No. For reasons I don't know. But at least it was a start. Lower Makefield Township is in the forefront. It's not only those three ordinance that I talked about, but there's a lot more that came after that. We are a model environmental community. Some people pull bits and pieces from us. I know Delaware Township, Delaware County, rather, Stasquahana County, not only used our ordinance, they took it verbatim. There's a lot of progressive Western communities that we know of that have taken our ordinance basically verbatim. We have made a monumental, I think, I've done a monumental achievement as far as this specific ordinance is concerned. Now...
Mr. Bray, I don't need to cut you short, but we have others to speak to.
Okay, I understand. The question remains, "Why are we doing this?" I don't think there is a good, valid reason. The EAC does not want this. And we have given you multiple reasons why we don't want this. The Planning Commission, in their wisdom, does not want it. The people of Lower Makefield Township, every comment that we have had has been against the inclusion of the ten percent non-native. They don't want it. Representative Santasiro does not want it. And he is very, very familiar with this in the early work that was done on this ordinance. He had a lot to do with its passage. So you have all this together. Nobody wants this thing, except, I don't know, maybe Supervisor Blundy, who is looking for more beautiful plants. But again, we have amply demonstrated that there is more than enough native plants. One last thing is that we do have the Lower Makefield Township Memorial Garden. And that, quite frankly, is a lovely backdrop for photographs. And a recent article, and I think it was Yardley Voice, that highlighted the EAC and the Kona compost thing. They use that as a backdrop. And I'm sure I'm a little biased, because my picture was included, but the background was actually quite lovely. So what I'm asking the board today is to do the right thing. The rest of the ordinance provisions, we don't have any issue with. But this is toxic, and I don't think it should be done.
Okay, thank you very much for listening to your comments. Yep. Any other public comment? State your name and address for the record, please.
Adrian Costello, twenty-one, twenty-two North Christian Boulevard.
Thank you.
First, I'm coming as a member of the Planning Commission, and I'm not going to speak for the whole Planning Commission, but I can at least give you a little insight into my, my vote. And I looked at this more technically. And honestly, the way this thing's written, I didn't even get into the depth of the thought process, because you're essentially taking a successful ordinance that we've had for fifteen or whatever the years, and you're making it less stringent. And there are too many avenues in there that I saw that there was not a real plan for control. I mean, you know, in terms of making people rationalize why they wanted to do something differently. Like, I don't think it's unfair to put in the ordinance, "Hey, developer, if you want to use white flower that doesn't exist around here, instead of the one that does, make your arborist, your landscape designer rationalize it, and bring it before the township and say, 'Okay, here, here are the ones that aren't on what you've historically done.'" And there was like, nothing like that. It was even the thing about, "Okay, have to run it by an arborist." You know, that was one of the line items. It didn't specify if that arborist had, was that the developer's arborist? Was that the township? Was it independent? Was it not independent? Like, to me, that to me was like, kind of a showstopper for me. Because if developers actually have something for them, you're certainly not going to take the person that they paid for. But the ordinance didn't specify that. It just said an arborist, certified arborists. You know, just, just things like that. I think for the flowering plants, you probably, my wife has beaten this into my head enough that you probably need to specify, "Okay, they still need to be good pollinating plants, even if they're not native." You know, you don't want, there are flowering plants out there that don't do any pollinate, aren't good for pollination whatsoever. You know, those are my technical sort of reasons. There was another one in there. But honestly, as I'm sitting here tonight, I'm, I consider myself a collaborator. And so like, I've talked to a few of you about this. And, you know, like, there's good ideas and people with the right minds that can get together, come up with the right things. And if it's, if some people are compromising, you got to put controls around it to make everyone feel good about it. But as I'm sitting here today, it was kind of eye-opening to me. I had no idea before this meeting that there was zero requests for a variance to, whatever you call it, waiver, waiver on this. And so, like, if there's zero, I don't know, there's been a decent amount of development in this town in the last fifteen years. If there's zero request for it, why are we changing it? Because I mean, again, we're only talking about developers here. Like, we're not trying to tackle the whole township and, and non-native plants in the whole township. This is just SALDO. This is development, right? So we're only taking one little piece of the pie. That's all this discussion is touching on. Everything else is not relevant, not germane to this discussion. And so, you have something that works. We've had a lot of development. Nobody has complained about it. So if no developers complained about it, asked for a waiver, there has to be individual citizens asking about it, and they can do what they want anyway. So I just don't see a reason why, I really don't see a valid reason why we are asking to change this when there's nothing that's told us it's not been successful. That's, that's, that's my comment. And, and I think, I hope you guys know, know where I'm coming from. And, and, you know, my personal opinion is a little bit different than my decision-making from last week, but I kind of got to the same place.
Excellent, thank you so much, Adrian. Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Alan Dresser, nineteen oh seven Lindbergh Drive. And I'm a member of the EAC, and kind of tired right now, but I'll go ahead. Okay, and I'm, I'm still trying to find a valid reason to do this. And I went through the minute, minute, meeting minutes from the December fifteenth meeting. And one of the reasons given was that if we pass this ordinance, it won't be a big deal. Minimal impact, because only five percent of the township's land is developable. And it would apply to that land. I think it's probably a little higher than that, but we'll, we'll use five percent. And that's equivalent to six hundred acres of property. And to support that hypothesis, that it's minimal impact, you looked at Pickett's Preserve, and you came up with the fact that a hundred and sixty non-native trees would be planted. That's good. But you forgot about the shrubs and bushes. There's going to be twenty or seventeen hundred shrubs and bushes planted. And those can also be ten percent non-native. So there, you got another hundred and seventy non-natives. So you take those numbers, and Pickett Preserve is thirty-seven acres, and you scale that up to the six hundred acres that can be developed in this township. I hope, they're not developed. I hope some open space is preserved by this group. But if it is developed, the result will be, there'll be twenty, two thousand six hundred non-native trees planted, and two thousand seven hundred and fifty non-native bushes and shrubs. Now that adds up to over five thousand non-natives. Now, that doesn't sound insignificant to me, because, you know, five, over five thousand non-invasive non-natives will, some will inevitably become invasive non-natives in the future, because so many other plants have done it. Because when you're planting over five thousand non-natives, you're going to get a lot of variety of types of plants. So that's something to consider.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Hines, thirteen fifty-five Edgewood Road, Yardley, of course. And I'm also a member of Harb. And let me just add a, I cannot be as thorough as Dan Grenier, or as eloquent as Mr. Bray. But I, I was thinking, along with the, for the once of a nail, the shoe is lost parody, or parable, Mr. Bray's description of what might happen in the animal kingdom is only part of the story, I believe. I think that there is also a chemical consideration. I've seen in just the area and back of my house over the past thirty years, a number of plants come to the forefront because of the overall climatic environment, but also the fact that they have different chemistry than some of the trees next door. So we seen, next door to them, so we seem to have lost a number of beech trees that were once a healthy colony. And I think that that kind of thing could happen, and it's not just the adjacent. It's also the leaves have a different chemistry. They get into the ground at a different location and start to affect the plant life, and those. So I think, in other words, the system that we have, this ecosystem, really needs a lot of study. And if there's going to be a thorough presentation of this in order to get the approval for the SALDO, it might really require a professional input from a landscape architect, or an arborist, or some other environmental scientist on the part of the developer to say why they want to use these non-native plants. And even if you go ahead and say, "Let's, let's allow for it," there should be reasons to allow for it. And if that can be included in the ordinance, I think you might have a better ordinance. Certainly would want to say that in Edgewood Village, we would want to see only native plants being utilized. And there is development that will proceed up there eventually. So I would like to suggest, similar to what the senator said, is that we table this discussion until there's more input from experts, naturalists, and other people. Because I can, I can see that there might, in some cases, be new plants that are found someplace that, that really thrive next to parking lots. That might be a really valuable reason for having a non-native plant installed and be part of the system that we can utilize. So if we're going to change it, let's change it so that it actually has a positive impact on what we're trying to achieve in the developments that we have, which is longevity, as well as beauty. And I think, in general, considering in overall, the system that we, we need to think about when we do this, if we just say, "Well, we like to have this plant there, because it's a nice plant, or it costs less." Instead, we should say, "What's it going to achieve for us in the long run? Is it good for the environment? Is it good for the community?" Thank you.
Excellent comments. I really appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to table the motion.
Well, I am not going to...
I can second that.
Well, I think we have, we already have a motion on the table, right, to approve the ordinance, correct?
There is, when they have a motion table, you consider that, there's no discussion. It's just then you go right to the vote on whether they agree to table the motion.
Well, I have a question for the maker of the motion. And I think that we got some really good feedback from, you know, a lot of the folks in the audience and on the phone. I think Supervisor Grenier gave some good feedback regarding the verbiage that's included in the ordinance. As far as specific, it seems to be a little bit loose, to say the least. There's, you know, some things that are missing from it. I think Mr. Costello made that same point. I believe that I made the request for the ordinance. So how would that work if we wanted to re-advertise the ordinance under different verbiage?
Well, technically, we could either table it and then have it go back, or I think the better way to be, would be to move to deny the ordinance tonight as advertised, and then send it back to whomever you want for, you know, the, to clarify and make the point that you want to make.
Is that something we can do tonight?
Yeah, you'd have to, either table it, so you then bring it back off the table at some point in the future, and then if you want to tweak it. But you're going to have to, you have to re-advertise it no matter what. You have, and if you have to change it.
At some point, we're going to have to re-advertise it.
Yes, yes. If, if you decide not to pass it tonight, correct, yes.
So I mean, as maker of the ordinance, I think that, you know, some of the points that were brought up by the audience and by Supervisor...
James, I think Jim has something he wants to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jim. Sorry, I had it to you.
No problem. I know Adrian had mentioned that the arborist, it's not really specified who they work for. It does say in the ordinance, it says, "Subject to the approval of an arborist for the township." I think that's pretty clear, that that's our arborist, not the developers.
Does that clear that part of it up for you? Okay.
Yeah. And I know Dan had mentioned the DCNR list and the Pennsylvania Natural, Natural Heritage Program list. There is a PA Natural Heritage Program list. It's on their website. It's called the PA IMAP Invasives. It's right there on their list, and it actually sort of cross-references with some of the other lists from the Department of Agriculture, DCNR, and a few other organizations.
Jim, clarification on the IMAP Invasives program. It's not a list, it's a, it's a, it's sort of an open-source program among, amongst local naturalists to identify where they're finding invasives around the state. The official list in Pennsylvania, from the Department of Agriculture, and the, the governor's executive order has a advisory council on invasives and non-natives. There's actually a presidential executive order along the same lines as well. So IMAP Invasives is not an, not an official list. It's a open-source program for, for local naturalists to update their data.
So I guess what my question is, would the maker of the motion be, well, I guess she wouldn't be rewriting what the verbiage of the ordinance is, right? I mean, from a technical standpoint...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
As our solicitor said, there's a motion table, and there's a second. So that takes precedent over this motion.
You, you would deal with that motion first, and then if it's...
Right. We need, we need to either agree to table or, or, and that would end this conversation.
Correct. And if it doesn't pass, then you come back and decide what you want to do with the main motion.
Exactly.
So we have to decide at this moment.
You have to decide whether to table it right now. And then if you don't want it, if you pass that, then it's tabled, or you could defer it to a specific date.
But then, the only thing you would have to do is you just would have to re-advertise that. So if you weren't changing the ordinance, you don't need to re-advertise the ordinance. Or if you did, the answer is, just a new date.
That's correct.
If you were going to make a change to it, then you're sort of starting and having to re-advertise the ordinance.
Go back to planning commissions and everything else.
I guess what my point is, is that as the writer of the ordinance, I'm not one-hundred percent comfortable based on some of the comments that I've heard tonight from EAC and from Supervisor Grenier. So I'd rather write an ordinance that adheres to their concerns.
Well, then, let's, procedurally, then, like, I'm not telling anybody what to do. But if you want the ordinance actually to be rewritten, then you would vote against the motion table, because the table just kind of puts it away for a while. But if you want to bring it, then you bring it back and say, then you, the main motion is to approve the ordinance as written. And if you decide against it, then you do that. And then, but then you could also decide to send the, the, the ordinance, as you have it, back to the appropriate committees to, to re-advertise. But unless you want to have the wording tonight, but it seems to me there's a lot of work to be done, if that's the direction you want to go, to look at the language and everything else that you're talking about.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's, it's, it's a little tighter, you know, to, it wouldn't be a table, right?
So can I ask a question as well?
Sure.
Sure. So when, when you say, Dave, that we would have to re-advertise, so you mean go through the re-advertising, back to the planning commission, back to the Bucks County.
Yes. If, if you're going to change the ordinance substantively, which it sounds like that, if that's where, if it doesn't pass tonight, that's where you're going to go. Yeah, and then it would have to go back to the Bucks County Plan. It's just like, yeah, it's starting all over. Now, you may have a structure you can work with. There's a lot more there you want to keep than not. But the parts you don't, that's, that's the part you'll have to wrestle with and to have, you know, have that, that part of the ordinance rewritten. And then at the end, go to Bucks, Bucks County Planning Commission, go to the Laura Makefield Planning Commission. You know.
I think it also gives us an opportunity because it's, as it stands from the feedback that I'm getting is that there are things within the ordinance that people are in favor of.
Those, those who spoke against the 10% seem to be okay with the vast majority of the balance, the caliber changes, the height changes, things like that. And I'm not speaking, I'm not going to speak for it. That's my recollection.
Sure.
And your recollection is, is, is spot on on that. If we were to remove the non-natives, you would deem that a substantive change then?
I, I think so because there's enough with that. There's some questions about invasiveness or and or noxious. Now, I realize some of the, some of the other ordinances are going to be already in the process of being rewritten, but I, I would, I'll be much more comfortable if you want to pass it as an appropriate ordinance to say that, that there would be a substantive change, even to delete that, because there's just too much with that that would be affected, I think.
Just one more procedural question. If the maker of the motion withdrew the motion, where would that leave it?
Well, if it withdrew the motion, then, then there's, there's nothing before you. But now, then again, you'd have to go back. The, the end result's the same. You still have to re-advertise.
That doesn't, but that still gives you the ability to rewrite the ordinance.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, sure. Yeah. The only thing that doesn't give you the right to re, well, two things. If you pass the ordinance, obviously you're not rewriting it. Or if you table it, you're just deferring until later time, but you're going to come back to the same ordinance. Yes.
Got you. Interesting.
So now I, I want to make sure everybody knows I was awake at this point. But so right now, it's the motion that tables before you right now. So then you'd want to take a vote on that. And if it passes, then it's tabled. If it doesn't, then you go back to the main motion to pass the ordinance or not to pass the ordinance as, as presented and written and advertised.
Or if the maker of the motion withdraws the, the, the motion, then.
And if the person seconded, they would, would agree with that.
Okay.
Yep.
But I, I mean, the maker of the motion can't do anything until the table is taken care of.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
We have to, we have to vote on the table.
To vote on the table first, or the maker of the motion to table could withdraw that.
Withdraw your motion.
Could do that. It's up, it's up to you.
This is three chess.
What's before is the motion to table. Okay.
Take a second.
Call the question.
Yeah. Well, that's what I just said. Yeah. If you keep voting against the motion to table, then you go back to the ordinance. If you decide to vote against the ordinance or to withdraw the ordinance, then you go back to the drawing board. We have to deal with the tabling issue first.
Call the question.
I mean, did we have a second on the, did we have a, oh, we had it. Okay. Is there any discussion?
When you're seconded after.
There is no discussion on the table.
Yeah, is there any discussion on the table?
No.
None? Any public comment? None?
No.
All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion to table fails, we are now back to the main motion, which was originally made to approve the ordinance to amend the Sado provisions, 178 Article 11, landscape and open land requirements as presented and advertised.
The, the chair is asking the maker of the motion if she would consider withdrawing the motion.
In the spirit of cooperation, I will, I will do just that. But I would ask all my fellow supervisors to stop playing an ambush game if you have legitimate, we can disagree on 10% or not, right? That's, you say no, I say yes, right? But if you say there are substantive things that we could improve, all you have to do is say it and then we can work it out and we don't waste taxpayer dollars on something that could have been better from the get-go. So yes, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Okay. And is, does the, who made the second?
I believe Dr. Weiss did.
Weiss? Do you agree to the second?
I agree.
So the motion has been withdrawn.
You're, you're.
Sorry, the ordinance is not before consideration tonight. Have to re-advertise regardless of whatever we do, whether it comes back just as it is or, or something else.
Okay. And I, I would encourage all supervisors and, and members of the EAC. I mean, it's going to go through EAC. I guess it's kind of one of those processes where it's almost like you would want some type of EAC or planning commission or feedback prior to writing the ordinance, because then you present them with an ordinance that may not necessarily be something that they're agreeable to. So I, but I know that there's a chicken or the egg thing.
Well, and that, but that, I think that is something you could decide as the board. And I would suggest maybe not tonight, but before the next meeting, you kind of discuss the process for that particular ordinance, how you would like that to proceed in terms of review, drafting, because ultimately it's going to have to go through the same process for, for review after it's presented, which is the Bucks County Planning Commission and the Laura Makefield Township Planning Commission, because it's an NPC ordinance, which requires that. And that, that's not a Laura Makefield thing, that's a state law.
Okay.
All right.
Dave, am I allowed to make, make a motion to approve the ordinance as written, but, but remove any reference to allowing non-native plants?
I think that would be a substantive change. That's my concern. I, I understand your desire. I think the concern we have, and you pointed out, there are some other language concerns you had. So what 10%, you know, to borrow your argument, what does 10% mean? So I think that's.
Yeah. And the 10% is moot if we're, if we remove the non-natives, which is the fundamental argument. So I, I am not willing to include non-natives. So that's why I would like.
I assume that, yeah. And I, and I'm not suggesting, I, I think the sentiment I hear is that's something everybody wants to take back and really look at very closely and perhaps eliminate. And there may be some other things to tweak as well. I don't know. I would, as I think Supervisor Lewis asked me that question just a little while ago. I would be concerned that that would be a substantive change, even with the deletion of that. You, you agree?
No, I, I would, I would agree with you on that, even if, just because it's, it is changing the approach, but it would, it would also move forward with, with a new ordinance that, that recognizes all of the comments that we got this evening from our residents and our advisory groups and many others.
And to back up what Dan said, what you also said, Dave, in the end is you wouldn't want to pass an ordinance that a year from now, if someone was unhappy with, they challenged on the basis of the fact that you didn't re-advertise it.
You want this ordinance to be valid and, and, and unassailable once it's passed.
I, I agree. I agree. That's why I'm. Yeah.
Let's put it this way, it's going back to committee and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the best approach. Hopefully there's some, some, you know, Dan, I know you've made plenty of comments on it and plan, at planning commission, you know, in this forum and, and many other forums. Hopefully with the 10% aside, that, you know, that there's other attributes that you can bring to the ordinance going forward.
Oh, absolutely. The, the whole thing about, the best part of this ordinance, the, the best parts, I should say, it's plural, are the changes to the allowance in terms of the types and sizes of the trees, shrubs, et cetera. That, those will make for more successful plantings. That, that is actually a very, very positive change to the ordinance that I fully support. I, I, I've actually recommended that in the past to, on the AC, because that's something that we see every day as, as important to having more successful plantings. 100% accept that. That's, that's, that's a non-issue for me. In fact, I would stand up on my chair if I could and say, let's go for that. Everything else that allows for non-natives, no, thank you.
And then there's zero.
I guess, James, what you're saying is, Dan has made some points about 10% and there needs to be verbiage around whether that means trees and shrubs. So Jay, James is asking you, Dan, to submit that language. We understand that the 10% is not palatable to you, but.
So.
To clarify how it could be more palatable.
Well, it's, it's, the onus isn't on me to pass an ordinance that I disagree with wholeheartedly.
No, but if we are, we are a committee, right? You, you raised some concerns.
Right. I am not going to, let me be very clear. I am not going to rewrite the ordinance to help it be a bad ordinance. Any, any allowance for 10% of any type, to me, in my opinion, and I share this opinion with the AC and others, is a bad ordinance. So the, it is, it is not my responsibility to write what I feel is a bad ordinance. Anything that allows for non-natives is a bad ordinance.
Thank you, Dan.
So if you want to try, go, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to advertise the ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
What ordinance?
Bring it back. Bring it back. No one's going to work on, no one's going to work on trying to improve it. No one's going to, you know, partner in how we can do this. I, I don't understand the point of trying to make amendment, the person who has these great ideas.
Yeah. Point of order. If, if you feel that you're, you're going to come up with the same ordinance, we can reconsider what we just did. And vote on it again, if that's what you want to do. That's, that's, that would be, I mean, unless Dave has another, you know, you can ask to reconsider, we don't have to re-organize because today's the day. If you want, if you want to go back to the original ordinance.
The motion was withdrawn, so technically there's no motion on the table.
Oh, so if you want to put the motion back on.
I think that's what, yes, Ms. Blundy was saying.
I, you know, I, I asked the chair or the other supervisors for guidance because if we're going to fold up our tents and say, you know, I can't compromise on anything, I can't, I can't, then I don't know what language I would be trying to re-insert. So.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, just real quick. So Supervisor Blundy, you are making a motion to pass the ordinance.
There's no motion on the table because there was no second.
No second.
There's nothing open right now.
Well, no, she.
No, no, there was no second.
No, she's making a motion though. So now I'm, I know, but I'm asking for a second.
But, but there wasn't given one.
Wait a minute, hold on. She's making a motion to advertise. She would make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to pass it with a second discussion.
Okay.
Supervisor Lewis, yes.
This is frustrating because it represents an inability to talk and compromise on a few things. If you've got over half the loaf or 80% of what you want, and there's one provision that causes such an issue, why wouldn't you take the victory with 80 or 90% of the changes of the Sado ordinance that I think all of us agree are constructive and helpful and move forward on that? To the primary arguments that Supervisor Blundy made, I believe that Supervisor Grenier and I are more than willing to work with her, and I'm sure others would be as well, to address issues defined to meet her criteria of more attractive show-stopping gardens or parks, right? So I'm, I'm troubled here when it's one small provision that, that, that is being, that's holding up a lot of really good revisions to the, to it.
I wholeheartedly agree. From what I understand, Supervisor Grenier is not interested in working on an ordinance that includes anything that has to do with 10% non-native.
And I guess technically, we could open the floor up for discussion. I think everybody understands each other's positions. I, I technically could ask for comments, but you've had lots of comments.
Plenty, yes.
Unless you wanted to say, you incorporate all those comments from the previous discussion into this, unless somebody else has something else to add. It's entirely up to the chair on the.
I, I, I feel your frustration, John. I, Supervisor Grenier has adamantly said that he is not interested in working in an ordinance that includes anything.
But I, I think.
That has to do with non-natives.
But I think it's somewhat disrespectful to, to Supervisor Grenier's position. By the way, I, I happen to be in the same category.
But you, you also said that you're willing to work on it.
I'm willing to work on.
He said he's not willing to work on it.
James, I can speak for myself, James, if you'd like me to.
Yeah.
Sure.
So first of all, respectfully, James, my, my last name is pronounced Grenier, not Grenear. Just, I appreciate.
I'll just call you Dan. That's fine. It's a lot easier for me.
Whatever works for you. And I promise not to call you McCarthy. I, I, I know people do that too. I know you probably don't like that. But no, so, look, I've, I'm willing to, I was willing to accept the changes to the ordinance that include all of these, there's many addition. Let's look at the ordinance, okay? We added a lot to, to Mr. Bray's point. We added hundreds of species to this, okay? I'm actually opposed to allowing for cultivars in the.
Cultivars is, is in existence today.
I understand that.
Right, we're not adding the cultivars.
I would, I, thank you, Suzanne, let me, so I would remove cultivars if it was up to me. Okay? Because cultivars have a similar potential as non-native plants. Because you don't always know where the cultivars come from. Because despite what has been said tonight, genetic engineering does not make for a better environment. It reduces your biodiversity and makes your environment worse. Again, accepted science. So I am willing to work on an ordinance that makes sure that we have a diverse group of very beautiful native plant species, whether they're trees, shrubs, flowers, grasses, et cetera. I am willing to work to create beautiful parks that are great. I don't want to say what other people have said, Suzanne, because I understand that's annoying to you and I, it would be to me too. But I want to create beautiful landscapes. Let's say it that way. Whether, for, because that improves your quality of life. Let's, let's be honest. I understand why people like pretty things if I oversimplify it. It's nice to look at, it makes you feel good and it improves your quality of life. That being said, so I understand that completely and I, I would love to work towards that goal. However, doing that at the expense, the detriment of our environment, which affects us in so many other ways, can have a very negative effect on our quality of life. Right? This, it's an important distinction to make. So I, I'm more than happy to look at larger plant lists that are native and maybe help work with developers and others to promote certain species on those lists as they come before us, so that maybe we look at a promenade of some type that promotes native, beautiful plants. I don't want to, Prickett Preserve is going to have a nice walking area, right? I'll use that as an example, not to pick on them, but because we're tying that to a pedestrian area, right? So when you're walking as a pedestrian, not only do you want to look at pretty, you know, beautiful plants, you know, some of them may only flower a couple of weeks a year. A lot of these flowering trees, that's all they do. And then they drop fruit on you, right? So which, which actually becomes a nuisance. So you want to be very careful about which plants you pick. But you can still plant native stuff in those areas that have that same effect. I'm, and I, I will promote that with, not to put words in Supervisor Blundy's mouth, but I would say that's probably something she would be in favor of if done properly because it promotes, it promotes pedestrian access. That's also beautiful. And at the same time, it, we, we have a wonderful knock-on effect that it promotes native wildlife that when you're sitting in some of the, on some of those benches at Prickett Preserve, right? You'll be able to watch the native birds eating from the native trees, eating, seeing the, the native pollinators buzzing around to all the flowers for those couple of weeks a year, right? And that's going to create a beautiful environment for us to enjoy, whether we're shopping or just sitting there enjoying that open space. Okay, that's going to, that won't occur to nearly that extent if we go with non-natives. So I am more than happy to work on reviewing landscape plans for future developments that promote more beautiful, diverse landscapes that people can enjoy. What I don't, what I don't appreciate is being told that I have to accept non-native plants, something that I know as a scientist, again, that studies this, is not good for our environment. To me, it would be unethical for me as a scientist to accept that. I cannot accept that in good, but in any way, shape, or form, because I know better.
If you ever thought I was intending to ask you to do something unethical, that was not my intent, and I apologize for that. I understand that you will never, ever, never, ever, never, ever, never, ever vote for non-natives. What I was asking for was your help in making sure, because you said there was the possibility that the 10% could be doubled somehow, right? Even though 30 years I'm an attorney, I, I think it's pretty clear. But I defer to you on that. I would tighten up that language, and you would still vote against it, as is your right. And I would support you to do that, assuming you never got back here again, blah, 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 blah. That being said, right? That being said, so that everyone at home understands the, the new ordinance that is before us, that was worked on with the EAC, that I met with the EAC starting last year. Jim, we froze to death on Main Street in early April because we kept pushing it off, hoping for warmer weather. So it's, it's been almost a year since that day where you showed me the difference between the native description that was used in this ordinance passed 15 years ago versus what other people define as native to this area of Bucks County. So with that all said, I'm going to once again try for compromise and a better ordinance. So I will, just to show you I'm fickle, withdraw my motion again, look to partner with the other supervisors to tighten up the language so that we can come back with a better product that still may not make everyone happy, but will be tighter. So.
Does the second agree with?
Dr. Weiss, would you?
More than happy to.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Yeah, I, I wish that was the next agenda item. So we are moving on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. Is there any public comment?
We do have one caller on the line. This is Helen, and she's being moved in now.
Thanks, Helen. So we're just going to take the, the caller on the line first? Oh, because it's Helen? Oh, jeez, she'll kill me.
Helen is now in the room.
One second, she's coming on. Hold on. Is she on?
Yep, she's there.
Start talking, Helen, because Steve's running up to the, uh, the stage. State your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, Helen Hines, 1355 Edgewood Road.
Can we have, we've never done this before. Can we have public comment virtually and, and in person by the same people?
I don't see why not. Of course, the question is going to be how the minutes are going to reflect that. We want to make sure one talks at a time.
Sure.
We want to, we want to be very clear about that, that one can talk. And I guess, I mean, Mr. and Mrs. Hines obviously know one another. And they're, but, but we want to make sure that the minutes are clear, that when one speaks, the other does not.
So Mr. Hines, if you could say your name and address to the record.
Steven Hines, 1355 Edgewood Road.
And my only recommendation is let her talk first.
No, I think we've worked this out.
You did, okay, if it's a skit and you guys know, then, okay. Whoever wants to go first, just one at a time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I appreciate the forum and able to present a situation which happened, which is, is very personal, but I think it has larger impact and larger implications that should be dealt with by the Board of Supervisors. I would start by a little history of the date. This is Monday. A project which has been waiting for quite a while has begun in my front yard to connect my house to a lateral force main that would connect us then to the sewer. And since it is within the required distance, and this is a public sewer, we would somehow or other be required to do that by state law. So we are undertaking this as a culmination of a long process that has taken 35 years. And my wife will address the history of that. But on Monday, the current history, the most recent history is that about 1 o'clock or maybe 2 o'clock in the afternoon, the township inspector stopped by and stops work on the project. And he said that because it was, there was no permit. And I particularly had asked the contractor on the week and the before, or on the Friday before, if he had a permit, if he was going to have a permit. And he said, oh yeah, it's all taken care of. And when the inspector said that, I said, whoa. And he's, and you also have to pay the tap-in fee. Uh, and I, I said, oh, so I have to go down there and give you $1,200? And he says, oh no, $2,750. It was the amount that was required. And I said, well, that's not right. I guess I'll go down to the township and address that issue. And when I came in, I met Mr. Meduski at the counter, and I was coming in pretty hot because I didn't expect to hear that kind of number put out because the agreement that I had with the township, a signed agreement that said the tap-in fee for me would be $1,200. And so when I saw Jim, I said, okay, I have a checkbook here. I'll give you $1,200. He says, oh no, it's $2,750. And at that point, I said, that's not what I, my understanding of our agreement. So he says, I guess you want to talk to Mr. Ferguson. So he brought Mr. Ferguson out to the counter, and I started to say what I just mentioned to you, that the amount that I was expecting to pay was $1,250. And he said, no, that's not right. And I said, well, you know, that's the understanding I had from my agreement with the township. And he says, well, the new rates are here. And he went and he got me a packet of, from the, I guess, the Tour Authority. And then when I said, well, this is not right because we have this agreement. And he said, well, I'm not familiar with that. And at that point, because I was suffering under the burden of 35 years of trying to make this correct, even after a lot of, let's say, counterproductive work the township did. And both at that time and subsequently, I was angry. So I said something about, well, you said you were familiar with this case and that, you know, you knew what was in the stipulations in the agreement. And he said to me that, well, I don't know. Every little thing, you know, every little thing that goes across my desk. I, I handle 400 things a day. And I said, well, this is important to me, and you shouldn't take that tone toward me. And I said, you know, you're my employee. I pay the taxes, which pays it. And he says, no, I work for the supervisors. And then he proceeded to get even more excited and unpleasant and said, well, you are condescending. And this, and started to get even louder so that the entire office heard it. And I was terribly embarrassed. And maybe even egged him on a little bit by saying, well, this is something that I expect you to do if you say you were familiar. And I talked with him two weeks ago, and I asked him the same, if he was familiar with it. And at the same time, he said he was familiar with it. So I was perhaps unpleasant. And he said, well, you're unpleasant, and you're disliked, and you treat my staff the same way. You're, like, you know it all. And I did this thing that I do sometimes with my children. I roll my eyes and look exasperated. And because I didn't have a mask on, he saw that, and he got even madder. And he lost his temper and was yelling. And I said, that's not the way I expect to be treated. And I walked out. And didn't give him the money. And I was figuring, okay, well, you know, we've lost another day trying to get this installed. And now we've lost almost a week because the, with the 10th, the contractor wouldn't come back. And, you know, if this involves the fact that I end up having to pay more money, I think I'm going to be blaming other people besides, you know, the contractor or myself. The bottom line is, I think that the professional attitude, in fact, I said the way he was acting was unprofessional. And I, I think a professional attitude is absolutely required. And, you know, 20 years ago, when I was dealing with Nancy Frick, she did the same thing to me. You know, in a meeting of our peers, she started to belittle me. It was, you know, just a hack architect who lives down the road. And she was taken to task by not only me, but a number of other people and made to go to certain courses to adjust her attitude toward the public. So, you know, perhaps that's something that might be requested, suggested strongly on my behalf. And the bottom line is that he did have his inspector, Mike Kirk, call me up, I was on my way home, and tell me that I should return because he wanted to apologize, which he did in front of everybody there. And, and that's fine. But I think a public apology on televised would be appropriate in this case. But it, it shouldn't be for that reason. It shouldn't be that I feel slighted. It should be because the general attitude of professional courtesy has long been missing from a lot of the people. And even if there are curmudgeons, as my wife calls me, like me, out there who, because I'm an architect, I deal with contracts all the time and say, I expect people to live up to what they agreed to do. And so far, they haven't. They haven't 35 years ago, and they're still not doing it today. He did admit that he was wrong and that he found the document that gave the stipulations of our case. And the amount that I had to pay was $1,200, which I did. But hopefully, that's not going to get in the way of getting the thing installed because right now I can't get to my front door, and that's been the case for the last three days.
I'm sorry, I did have to add something.
Sure.
I, I do.
Oh, one other thing, before you start. The, the reason I felt that I had to come tonight was because that after I left, he circulated an email to all the supervisors. And I was told about this, but certainly didn't receive any copy of it. So I feel that I had to come and explain my side of the story.
Sure.
So, I'm sorry, Kirk.
So to finish off the story, the permit was not paid. And part of what I had said to Mr. Hines was, he could continue, even though the permit wasn't paid. As he had indicated, I did apologize to him. However, while my reaction was unfortunate, I will not apologize for standing up for my staff. So while I made an apology in front of everybody to Mr. Hines, he made no such apology to the staff members that he was berating on site. I do know that he took him aside on his own and apologized after I had asked him to come back in. So in the end, yes, I did get wound up, there's no doubt about it. But in large part, got wound up for the way he himself was acting. While mine was inappropriate, it was in reaction to what I was seeing beyond just $1,200 description. And I did apologize to him, and I apologized in front of staff. And at the same time said, yes, it's $1,200. And I'll tell you, I won't even make you pay for the permit to allow the contractor to proceed. Whether or not that was the contractor's fault or not, the township requires permits to be paid. And if the contractor is at fault, then that is something that the property owner needs to take up with the contractor. So the inspector that was out there was correct to stop the project because it was not processed with permit, albeit a marginal fee of $179. So we did allow that to proceed immediately. In fact, went down to tell the contractor that he could continue and coordinated with him to try to make an arrangement, either through the contractor, through Mr. Hines, moving forward.
Thank you. And I, I think Ms. Hines, you're on the line as well.
Um, yeah. I hope he's not having a heart attack. Um, anyway, this has been a very long process. And Steve is correct in the fact that this started, and I'm not sure whether everybody knows this, but it started with a, with a historic failure by the township to approve the plan for Yardley Estates. Way back in, when we moved in in 1984, we, the seller of our current house did not disclose to us that this property had been placed under possible condemnation for the front 15 feet of our lot. So we found out when, when we received the actual condemnation notice in the mail after moving in. And then went with our neighbors to protest this, this condemnation. And it turned out that the township had let the planning commission hold the plans too long, and the time had expired on the, on the contractor's plans. And he had gone to Bucks County Court and had the plans approved as they were submitted. So all the things that the planning commission of Lower Makefield should have received in this planning module was automatically approved by the Bucks County Court. So the township had to proceed to condemn people's right-of-ways. The township had to proceed to allow a trespass from a, two retention bases go across a person's private property because the developer got this approved in township court. So that was the beginning of it. The, the other people who were involved also sued the township and ultimately won at great personal cost to, to the person who had the retention bases distributed over his property. The man literally had a heart attack over this, which is why I'm concerned over this whole thing.
Don't do that.
You, we, you, you know, I know you know, Mr. McCarthy, what this is like. So basically, we had to, had to sue the township over the taking of our front yard because the township engineer hadn't had a chance to ascertain that our, our particular house had a lateral, had gone beyond the original septic tanks and actually had a lateral and had a box, distribution box, and three laterals that were in the township, front, the front which the township wished to take. So that meant that our lot was subject to a reverse condemnation at that point. And we had to sue the township as new homeowners moving into the township. And luckily, that actually went rather well. Mr. Dylan actually invited Steve to join the harve, and I ended up going into the historic commission and, and, you know, kind of doing things, trying to make some lemonade out of what was really, a really harsh entry into this township. But anyway, so we made this agreement with the township in, in the way that agreements were made in 1987, where the township agreed to vacate the condemnation. And we would sign an agreement with the township, which was going to be put in the drawer. I remember, you know, Grace Scott Chalk, Frank Fazlaur, people there at the time laughing about it, and oh yeah, they had apparently done it before. But the deed was literally put in the drawer. And we had signed it. And I just found the, the papers that we signed. Jim had actually sent us a copy of this that had basically said that the, the condemned nor shall, basically if and when the, the, the part that had been put in the drawer, that the deed was executed, that the condemned nor shall locate the public sewer system so as permit the condemned use to physically connect the dwelling to the sewer system. And then the property owner shall be required to connect to the sewer and abandon their private septic system as soon as the sewers are available. So, I mean, it was all intended when the house lot developed that we would all be able to hook in, this all could disappear. I didn't consider at the time that what if something had happened to Steve and I had to sell this house? I would have been left with, with a house that was literally not possible to sell. And this was, this was something that really hung over all of us. So as we went to, we had seven children at the time we moved in, and we had three more here. And we needed to expand the house, we went for a mortgage. And we're told that because our title was unsure, that we really couldn't qualify. So over the years, we had really felt held hostage, literally, by this township. And at this point, basically, just before COVID struck, our neighbor, who, who is a, a, a great lady, moved in, took her, met her cousin's house. Actually, they, they, they bought it from her cousin and decided to improve her property, which we are happy to see. She tore down his old house and improved the property and was granted the right-of-way through our front yard. I wish I had been notified before it happened, that it was going to happen, and it wasn't, by the township. Suddenly, one day, we're sitting there, and this tractor is going through our front yard. And we're like, but you can't do that, that's, that's not yours. And then we found out that the township had. And then we found out that the township had never vacated condemnation, even though they said they were going to. The, the lawyer shall remain nameless, but let's say it's a predecessor to our current attorney. And literally, it's in the drawer of our lawyer in Newtown. So we had never actually understood that that had ever been registered. At some point, probably between township managers, it got registered as a, as a deed that was, it recorded at the courthouse and we had no knowledge of that. So when this thing goes through our front yard, we automatically have to be hooked up. So we had to hire again. Luckily, by then, we, we had attorneys in our family. We now have five attorneys in our family. So one of our attorneys agreed to take it to his law firm and have them deal with it, which they did. And, you know, that means he is, he owes his, his partners that kind of service as well. So we've been incurring kind of reciprocal debts to our children at this point over, over suing the township yet again, or threatening to sue the township. We really do not want to sue the township because we understand that we end up paying anyway. Both sides of the lawsuit, whether we sue or we, we win, we're still going to be paying in our taxes for everything that we do as well. So we, we agreed that we would try to get this hookup now, now open to anybody who lives along Edgewood Road to, to have it, our sewer finally connected. And at this point, I thought everything was settled. Steve had, had interviewed several firms that were listed by the township. And, you know, we assumed that these guys knew what they were doing since they were listed by the township. And now he's, you know, this has happened and it's, it's really upsetting. And it makes me wonder what happens to other senior citizens who, who don't know some of the politics of this township and how people deal with them. What happens to them? That's all I have to say.
I, I. You can see that there's a certain amount of anguish here.
Sure.
Notwithstanding that, I would say that there's two things that we could ask the supervisors to take care of. One is the professional attitude, no matter how unpleasant the, the citizen is who shows up in front. You know, I did mention I was a citizen and you kind of laughed that off. The bottom line is that professional attitude and then the process that meant that I found out that I had to go down to do the tap-in fee, which was not explained because there was no notification that, oh, you have to do the tap-in fee. There was no paperwork to fill out. In fact, when I gave the check to the person at the sewer authority table, they, I, I said, is there a form? Is it no form? I said, well, how do you know which house it goes to? I guess you could use my address, it's on the check, but how else would you know? And so there's, there's no form. And, you know, that might be taken care of by whoever has purchased the sewer because they might have a more strenuous system. But I think everything that has to go into getting a permit should be explained, not only the contractor, who probably knows all about it, but there should be a sign off that says that the owner of the property also understands what his responsibilities are. And that, you know, I keep looking for ways to correct things. It's the architect to me. So that could be something that might be looked into as part of the process so that not only the contractor knows what's going on, but the owner of the property knows what's going, and he countersigns it so that there's an understanding that the township sees a signature that says, yes, I've read this and I know what I'm supposed to be doing. So with those things, I would leave, hopefully, on a positive atmosphere, even though we feel grieved, you know, thirty five years is a long time to wait for some, something to be done positively on the system. And the fact that whoever it was that was in charge did not vacate the condemnation thirty five years ago. And we were under the assumption, it's like almost we, standing in a crowd, we're shot at and we didn't hear the sound. And the guy really wanted to kill us. Isn't he still guilty of attempted murder? I, you know, I'd be.
Yeah.
At this point, I put it up to you, gentlemen.
I, I, we appreciate the feedback and, and, you know, as Chair of the Board, I can say that the positive outcome for me that came out of this is that two adult men, you know, after having maybe some emotional outburst with each other, came back and, and were, were bigger to each other and said, hey, I'm sorry. And, you know, you said sorry to the staff and, and the outcome could have been way worse. So I, I appreciate that there's still some humanity left in, in the township. And we're all human, right? So, I mean, the only thing we can do is just try to be as nice as we can to each other and, and, and try to, you know, move forward as, as, as human beings, but.
You were young.
I, optimistic, optimistic. So with that being said, we're going to move on unless there's any other public comment.
James, I, I have a technical concern that doesn't relate to the, any of the, so, I, I don't know, arguments or whatever it was. I just want to make sure we're, so, and Mr. Hines, this, this probably for you to answer, or Dr. Hines, if you can.
Yeah, I'll answer it. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. No, it, it's really, I just want to see where we're at in the process.
We have, we have sewage going into the ditch.
Well, and that's where I'm going, because that was, that's my concern. So the twelve hundred dollars was correct, not, not twenty seven fifty. That's been paid for and moving forward, right? Okay, that's clear. The, it sounded like the project, e- even though Mr. Ferguson was good and kind of waived the permit fee and allowed things to move forward because it sounds like there was a pause that, that, is the contractor currently working on the project? Did they step away or do they keep going?
He is gone.
Okay. Do we have any idea how long it's going to take to complete?
They said they would have be done by Thursday. That was the original estimate. But, you know, I mean, we, we now have a basically four-foot hole from our front door to the, to the ditch where they broke the laterals to all three of the, of the lateral pipes. So the water is now going into the ditch. The, this would be gray water probably coming from our, our plumbing system. And the ditch is emptying underneath the McMahon's driveway and underneath the Stebbins driveway into the storm sewer located on the edge of the Harris property, going underneath Edgewood Road into the Yardley Hunt Storm Sewer System.
Okay. So Jim or Andy, I don't, I don't know who answers this. And I don't know the specifics, but hearing stuff like, that's, that's what I wanted to get to, is that whether or not that was clean or not, if that's, if that is a discharge, a regulated discharge of some type, non-compliance of some type, that needs to be addressed immediately in some way, shape or form. It, I don't know if that's what type, if that's raw sewage going into a storm drain, it looks sort of like a combined sewer?
Yes.
Or if it, if it's that in nature, Andy or Jim? But I just want to make sure that they'll get their project done. I think they've worked things out. I just want to make sure that that specific issue is, is mitigated before we have a contractor that doesn't show up even longer and then we have the volume of sewage or other effluent, I'll, I'll use that term because I don't know exactly what it is, that's going into our storm system and our streams. Is there anything that we have to do if this, if this goes any longer? That's my, that's my main concern, at least the first blush of what I'm hearing here.
So from what I understand, I, you know, just basing what I am hearing, then there is, yes, there is some concern that, I mean, I would want to know when the contractor plans on returning and why haven't they returned yet?
And I actually wasn't aware that they hadn't made the connection. I thought they just hadn't backfilled the hole, which is something that needs to be done, but is different than just making the connection. So I'll actually give Mikael's a call and get them, try to get them out there as soon as possible.
At this point, they have ninety percent of the payment.
Is there, is there a temporary fix, Jim, that, that we can put in place? Or that, that would allow them to continue occupying the residence and, and using, you know, the plumbing during this, while, while this is an open, you know, I mean, essentially a health and safety hazard, I'm assuming.
Not that I know. I mean, I think it's something that has to be addressed by the plumber immediately.
Except to show up and do it, right?
Hold on. But we can have, we can have, not only Jim, we'll contact Freddie Burt, Jonathan Vito in our, in our sewage engineer's office, have, have Jim contact Mikael's first thing in the morning. If they're on their way out immediately, then obviously that's, we'll work around that. If there is a delay, we'll make sure that we have Jonathan or Freddie Burt get out there to give any professional assessment on environmental concerns, short-term mitigation efforts focused around when Mikael's plans to come back out.
Okay, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but if that's not something that can be done within the next couple of days, would, would maybe providing a portable.
I, I, I mean, I, I think, obviously, I, I don't want to put myself out there to say something that is incorrect. I think we would then need to, to assess with our sewage engineer what could happen, what we could do. And if we had to take some role in that, we would take some role in that, especially if Mikael's, for some reason, is MIA in this, that we wouldn't just leave that sitting there to do that. I was not aware until I, I knew that Mr. Hines had called today. But I was also under the assumption that, from my conversation with Jim, that the connection was made. So we'll go out, we'll call them in the morning. We'll get our sewage engineer on and if he advises.
Okay.
So in other words, I'll rely on Jonathan to say, if he says if this isn't fixed, connected today, it's going to be an issue and some, we'll have to do something specific. We'll.
Okay.
We'll, we'll tackle it tomorrow morning.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks. So if there is no other comments regarding that, we're moving to item number fifteen, discussion items. Any discussion items? None heard, moving on to, any, I guess we're in a public comment. We already got past that. Sixteen supervisor reports, I have nothing to report. Dr. Weiss?
I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Grignier?
Nice twist. We, we, let's see. Yeah, the planning committee, and you'll probably hear more about this on, at the 21st meeting. But in addition to the tree ordinance, they also had another review of the Act 537 Plan, where they voted in the, I'll say in the affirmative that the Act 537 Plan sale of the sewer system would not negatively impact their ability to review future land developments. That was a fundamental request there. What they did not agree on and did not vote in the affirmative on was whether or not the sale of the sewer system was in agreement with the township's comprehensive master plan. Other than that, the Harb and the Historic Commission both met. The ERC did not, and they are still working out the details of the request to have BCO come in front of us.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Blundy?
I have nothing.
And Supervisor Lewis?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, other business. Hearing none, I think we have some appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chair, it would honor me to reappoint Helen Hines to the Historical Commission.
Second?
Paul Roden. Oh, and Paul Roden to the Environmental Advisory Council.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Grignier. Any discussion? I hope I'm saying that right now.
I'm getting closer.
Any discussion? Call a question, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, did you want to cover the folks that were interviewed today?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, it would honor me to appoint, make a motion to appoint Pam Kravitz to the Assistance Traffic Committee, Mr. Richard Gorlick to the Emergency Management Committee, and Mr. Thomas Argentieri to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Did we give consideration on whether there's an opening on Historic?
We did. So I talked to Jim right before the meeting and he said that there's seven on that committee. And I think right now they have six. So, yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? Call a question, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Move. Second, third, fourth.
All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Good night, thank you.
Good evening.